Call up Lancaster Select Board meeting to order at 6:02 PM on Wednesday, July 13. The first order of business is approval of the meeting minutes, and I'm going to beg.
Wait one.
Oh, sure, yes.
Sorry.
Oh, roll call, roll call.
And let everybody know it's being recorded.
See, this is why he's a very good member of the board because he told me at the last meeting that I was only getting one help at one meeting, and he's already helping me at the second one, so thank you. Roll call, Mr. Allison. Just spoke up, we're here. Ms. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Kerrigan. We're all here. And this meeting is being recorded on Zoom, so everyone is aware. Great, thank you. Did I get it all now? Good to go? There we go, awesome. So I'm going to ask forgiveness of my board colleagues and hope that we can kick these meeting minutes to the next meeting. I promise I will give, I looked at it, had some questions, but I want to make sure I get everything together before we consider them. Would it be okay with the board if we tabled the approval of the minutes? If so, is there a motion?
Motion to table the minutes.
Excuse me?
Okay, all in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan, aye. Three zero. Uh, three zero zero, I guess, for tabling the minutes. All right. If everyone is, here's a second item, a third item, but second thing to do tonight is scheduled appearances and public hearings. Is everyone for the hazard mitigation? Plan? I have that urge to give that speech about being the luckiest man at baseball, you know where it's from.
You may want to mute Mr. Host.
Okay. Is everyone involved in the presentation of the Town of Lancaster Hazard Mitigation Plan present on Zoom?
Well, I think you're muted Town of Lancaster host.
Oh. So there's two Town of Lancasters.
I'm one of the Town of Lancaster's on the top of me.
And then the other Town of Lancaster that's on a camera issue? Okay.
Okay. Except for we're still muted over here. You cannot hear me, yes? So, oh, the host would like to unmute. Oh, I'll do. There we go. Now can you hear me? Fantastic. So I'll ask again, is everybody involved in the Town of Lancaster Hazard Mitigation Plan presentation present on the Zoom? And if so, could one of you put a thumbs up or hands up, and we will recognize you to begin the presentation?
I think this was submitted to us by Jasmine, am I correct?
Correct, so.
So perhaps you should lead?
Yeah, it was initially submitted in May, and they were scheduled to appear in June. And then PJ Keating and CEI were going to appear, so we asked them to delay. So Jasmine, I believe, was the lead on this, and.
So I see her.
Right.
So why don't we recognize?
Jasmine, if you can unmute.
I already recognized anybody who's willing to be recognized, nobody seems to want to recognize.
Nobody wants to talk to us.
Jasmine?
I am here, Kate, sorry.
The floor is yours.
I apologize, just because I was just loading onto my audio, this is for the Hazard Mitigation Plan, correct?
Indeed.
Was that yes, I apologize?
Yes, yep, mm-hmm. Yes, so what?
There should be Jonathan Voss on this call tonight, who should be presenting, is he not on?
Yeah.
There isn't, oh, there he is, Jonathan.
He is presenting, he's from MRPC.
Okay. All right, Jonathan, now the floor is yours.
Thank you so much.
All right. Would it be possible for me to share my screen? Take a brief, you know, overview presentation that I could hopefully run through fairly quickly?
Yes, the. The short answer is it's possible, the long answer is, give us a second.
All right.
I just sent you something, do you see it?
You see, I can indeed, perfect.
Take it away.
Here we go. All right, this is an earlier power push from a few months ago by a, it works as a service overview for the Hazard Mitigation Plan for Lancaster. The materials within it and the general process that Monchee Regional Mission and the Hazard Mitigation Workgroup both undertaken in development of the plan today. This project started back in 2021, and we're hopefully finalizing it relatively soon. The members involved are the Fire Chief, who are also the Emergency Director, the Director of Community Development, and Jasmine, Public Works Superintendent, Chief of Police, and Member of the Order of Health. Jeffrey Allegra, Principal Planner here at Monchee Regional Mission, has been Project Lead for the last several months, and I've been acting in an assistant role, mainly with the development of some of the material within the body of the plan itself, and some of the supplementary material that we're currently finalizing, so that the plan can be submitted to NEMA for review. And also Karen Chapman, who is the Plan Development Director here at MRPC. She was involved more significantly in the early stages of this project. The Lancaster Hazard Mitigation Plan serves as a town-specific update to the 2015 Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan that MRPC created on behalf of the Monchee City Region. This is, which expired in 2021. This plan is a list heavily from that and also from the municipal vulnerability preparedness work that Lancaster undertook a few years ago. A number of these hazards mean the same, flooding, severe winter storms, droughts, tornadoes. After an expansive period of time working with the Workgroup and also some public input, there are eight most hazards that have been the central focus of this Hazard Mitigation Plan. Flooding, severe winter storms, other severe storms, droughts, wildfires, earthquakes, infectious diseases, and invasive plant species. We have here is just a brief history of the impact of severe weather-related incidences within Lancaster historically speaking, which continued on to be less recent with winter storm NEMA. And several wildfires, and obviously the COVID-19 pandemic. We spend a significant period of time analyzing each of the eight identified major hazards to the community throughout the, throughout the plan, and also analyzing the current situation of the town in terms of critical facilities, any currently existing emergency management planning documentation, risk from flooding communities, and also just the general community setting is also a focus as well, just to really capture every and every aspect. Just for a quick overview of each of the individual major hazards, the highest, you know, priority one, flooding. Major history of it here at the town, it has wide impact, there's high risk in town, especially in high, you know, developed residential areas. And it remains a concern, not just in Lancaster, but throughout most communities in Massachusetts as well, which is, you know, no surprise when you have abundance of waterways. One of the additional major hazards are severe winter storms. Have a notable impact on Lancaster, there have been several recent ones, and they occur fairly, with fairly reliable frequency, at least once every 10 years. There are other severe weather incidences, not just winter storms, hurricanes, extreme winds, along those lines. Then we also have droughts. I'm not sure if you maybe were or not, but the state just announced that we are, 90% of the communities in Massachusetts are currently suffering from drought in a number of categories. Directly right now, and this is currently becoming a growing hazard in terms of just the frequency severity it occurs. This is just some information covered, and all of these are analyzed much more in depth in the Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is just a quick overview. And obviously, this one probably is highlighted for most people recently, the hazard of infectious diseases and pandemics. And part of this is just analyzing Lancaster's current responses to infectious diseases, in large part taken from the town's plan for the COVID-19 pandemic. And of course, existing state and federal guidance for management and initiation when it comes to infectious diseases, especially those very likely spread. And we also have wildfire as a identified hazard for Lancaster. This is actually a special vulnerability for Lancaster, as it is more at risk than almost any other community in Massachusetts. For wildfire, in terms of just the exposure, indirect and both direct face throughout the community in terms of buildup. In fact, it's comparable to some locations in California and Colorado. Within Worcester County, it is the, one of the highest exposed communities in terms of risk, and it remains a vulnerable community in Massachusetts as well. About half the town is directly, about half the town is directly exposed to wildfire risk, and about half is indirectly exposed to wildfire in Lancaster specifically, where it's been more built up. And part of this is due to just the level of development in exposed areas, and part of it is due to additional risk factors, such as the deadly third priority, which is in northern Lancaster, in the Deadwood Forest area. And then one of the last hazards that was identified was earthquakes. They happen in Massachusetts infrequently. Something to be aware of, and be able to respond to if necessary. And then also we have invasive plants, species, and insects. There were several that were identified, it's just hazards for ecology. And then we just come back to the summary of the hazards here. This is the majority of the plan in this focus. And then we also identify other resources and then other factors for additional hazards and vulnerabilities, I identified them more at length. And I will end the presentation there, hopefully, and then if you want me to revisit anything, I'm happy to stop.
Jasmine?
And that was just a.
Sorry, go ahead.
And then, yeah, and that's just a pretty much a brief overview of the focus of the Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is identifying the highest priority, you know, the highest concern hazards that the community will face. Originally, it was just about half a dozen in the regional plan and the municipal vulnerability, and then we merged some of the factors, feedback from the Workgroup, and some of the feedback from the Public Service of London. And then also, as part of that, we also put them into a combined ranking for the overall significance of risk to the community, which is in the order that we presented, with flooding being the highest in the severe risk to the community in terms of impact there, the impacted infrastructure, global concern, the likelihood of occurrence. And then it continues down, the severe winter storms, drought, extreme temperatures, wildfire, infectious diseases, pandemics, other severe weather, invasive species, and then the least concerned is the earthquake.
Jasmine, any other part of the presentation you have, Jonathan?
Um, I'm here to answer any questions you might have. There is additional material, but that's much more extensive, and I'm not sure we necessarily have the time to go over that here.
It was quite extensive. Jasmine?
I would just like to state that it was actually Norine Piazza who had started the Hazard Mitigation Plan. She had held all of the initial public hearings and the public charretts for this process, and really put in the majority of the legwork to get us to this final stage. MRPC luckily had a majority of that information and came forward to us after I had been appointed as Director to complete this process now. In completing our Hazard Mitigation Plan, it actually opens up for the Highway Department, Police, and Fire to apply for other grants that the Hazard Mitigation Plan is necessary to have in place in order for them to qualify for other grants. So I strongly recommend reviewing this plan and getting any revisions out as quickly as possible, so that way we're not holding up any other grants for DPW, Fire, or Police, because that's really, as important as this plan is to have, it's impactful in more ways than just the Hazard Mitigation Plan, and it's also very important to build off of as far as emergency management. So it's just a very critical plan, and I really think that it's a building block to have in town, and it's very necessary.
Okay, thank you. So I will go to the board with any questions. Jason, since you're on Zoom, we'll go to you first if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and then for me, just a thank you to Ms. Piazza. Her presence is continually being felt, even as she is moved on.
Well said, we do thank her, we have the whole town. Ms. Turner, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you for everybody for picking up Norine's work and continuing it, because this is, as we sit in a drought now, we recognize that there are many risks to us, environmental and otherwise. In fairness, now, we have to get, hopefully, Mr. Chair, that we can get into the practice of getting, our agenda's a little early, in fact, I'm not even sure if we got it earlier, it's 87 pages, but I read some of it with great interest, all of it with great interest, what I saw. So, some of the things that, I looked at the responses, because it was very good about identifying some of the issues. Jasmine, maybe you could speak to me, there was on the invasives section, which is becoming statewide, actually nationally, more of an issue. We have many farms, and the Agricultural Commission, and the CONCOM, and to some extent, the Board of Health, because of the effect on water, and, or involved in that. I didn't see much discussion or feedback from any of them, and I noticed that they were not on the steering committee. Do they, now, I understand that we're down a Conservation Commission agent. We do have an active ag commission in Board of Health, but I just wanted to make sure that they were able to offer input, or did offer input?
Yes, the Board of Health, the Conservation Commission, all of the boards in town were offered to give input on this drought plan before you know.
Okay, and did they do that?
Some people did not provide comments, some boards did not provide comments, and some boards were very active in providing comments.
All right. Another thing that, as we sit in a drought, we're worried about, and this isn't just with hazard mitigation, but there's always discussion about Lancaster's water and our two wells, going back to the Dark Ages, when Steve and I had this discussion, something, some odd years ago.
Twenty-something years.
Yeah, and at that time, DEP told us or warned us that we were pulling too much from our, from our wells at times, and I noticed that in the plan, it looks like we have developed quite a bit more land, anybody can see that as I drag. Is Kevin here, or do we, or maybe Jasmine, you could tell us, where are we on our withdrawal permits, and do you know how much, where we're at?
I unfortunately cannot speak to that.
Okay. Because there's a lot of good discussion here about identifying some issues. It's nice, part of what I hope from the plan is that we can get some really actionable things, that we can start pushing, and water, drinking water is real high on the list. Wildfires was discussed as being one, too. And we've had sort of what I'll call micro, or small disasters in town that I've been aware of the last couple of years. And I know it speaks briefly to this, do we have, or can we incorporate, I think we need to, and my understanding is we don't have an emergency management plan right now? Is that part of this, is that something that we can finish and incorporate in this? Because what to do when all these eight categories come together and we have that emergency, or one of eight comes together? Is that part of the plan, Jonathan, or is that supposed to be?
Yeah, I can speak to that a little correctly, is identifying, is part of the process of identifying each of these hazards and the town's specific vulnerabilities to each of them. It's also to develop mitigation strategies that are incorporated in the actual body of the plan itself, and these identify specific overarching goals and individual actions that the, that the town can take in order to reduce their level of vulnerability and to also potentially directly address any extreme hazards in basis of emergency.
Did I miss the section where these get, I saw that each, within each category, things were prioritized or had objectives? Does the plan summary, did I miss it, identify weaknesses and prioritize them?
Yeah, so the Hazard Mitigation Plan is divided up into several sections. The third section is going to be profiled, begins to address, you know, the GAF factors of the town, the overall environment. And then in section four, it gets more into the weeds about identifying the hazards and the different vulnerabilities. And then it moves on to the mitigation section, which addresses how the town can respond and reduce the risk, and then it goes on to the main.
Which section is that, Steve is trying?
Section five.
That's what, yeah, so the response section, and that's what I had looked for, okay. That's right, section five and section six, the mitigation and the response.
Yes, so that's where it breaks, it starts breaking it up.
It gives some ideas, some of them. If we could just look at this, because some of these, for example, I was looking at the flooding one, it's like a wetlands bylaw and so on, talked about, has since been created. Some of these things look like they might be dated. Or maybe they just, maybe you mean that they need to be improved, that was just some, and it talks about the Community Preservation Act.
Can you point to one in particular?
Page 75, Local Plans and Regulations. So I could be, as I said, please, I apologize if you're, if I'm, I scanned in the most superficial way, I prefer to be more prepared, but.
If I may, it says some examples pertinent to Lancaster include?
Right, 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 and the mitigation options.
So what's the question, I'm trying to figure out?
It's just these suggestions, so I can, you know, I will, I will look at it more carefully, how's that go?
That sounds good. Do you have any further?
I have lots and lots of questions, but I don't want to bog down the whole meeting with it, so.
No, that's, any feedback and any question, we're more than happy to take. Unfortunately, I'm not Project Lead, Jeffrey Allegra is our Principal Plan, but anything I'm getting here, I'm passing on, and if I can't answer it directly, and I'll respond you within the next day or two. And also, even when we finalize some of the supplementary material, to get it in a position where it can be submitted to NEMA, that's just for NEMA to review, which is Massachusetts, which is part of emergency management. That's just for NEMA to review the draft, to make sure that he pretty much checks off all the boxes, and while NEMA is doing that, the plan can still be updated and continuously revised, because we're in open communication during this process. And that, that lasts for several weeks. Once, once that happens, and NEMA is satisfied with it, they pass, they pass it up to FEMA, to pretty much give the final review and the final approval, and then the plan comes back to the Select Board for approval. That, and that would be the final plan, but even after submitting it to NEMA for the first preliminary official review, it's still open to revision, whether it's from feedback from the Board of Selectmen, from the public, or if maybe there, there are some actions that, you know, were identified to help reduce mitigation on notice, those actually were implemented either beforehand or. or during that period, we can update the plan to reflect that. So it's, we must update the current possible by the time it actually is brought for final approval.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, it might be worth just noting that this is also the third draft of this, so the board was provided an initial draft in April and there was an update in May. So if you go through, you can see that there's a few differences in the iterations between them. So if you take what you had seen in April and in May, and you have them electronically and you're able to sort of combine them into one document, then Word will split them out and show you what has been added and subtracted.
Got it.
Yeah, there's been, definitely been some updates, which is great. Page 79, 80, 81 has sort of what I was looking for is the summary, but I think the concern of doing this enough is, for example, I think we all know that culverts really need work and those are the highest priority, it looks like, based on this way. And I don't know if it's just prioritized by department, but that seemed to be the first ones, it is the first ones that are showing. I think putting for us, and I don't know if we do this, putting cost and implementation schedule in this plan would be critical because the Groundhog Day part is that, all the things I'm seeing on this, most of the things I'm seeing on this, I've seen for years and years and disasters are coming, so.
But my guess is, given, John, my guess is, given that estimated cost and implementation schedule are on this, to be filled in, that as the process develops, those exact things will be filled in.
Yeah, that's currently some of the supplementary material that we're working on finalizing is to the best of our ability on our part. We're not engineers, so we can't give necessarily precise follow-ups. But we're aiming to finish that and then go back to the working group to make sure that in, you know, in their professional duties, that part I reflects to the best of their knowledge well of ours.
So when we'll, wait, before we submit it, we have rough ideas of cost and schedule submitted with it? Is that the idea?
Well, you'll have it based on generally.
Accepted principles and, and just basically wages that are put online, but this isn't an engineering firm.
No, I don't, that doesn't need, doesn't need to be, but does nothing, zero.
Right, I know, but, but part of it is that, you know, things have changed over the time when this started and when it went off. So that's one of the last things to go on because you want to capture the prices as close to the finalization date as possible. So I think that that would be in like, in the next iteration. So what the board is sort of looking at now is the context and not necessarily down to the minutia there yet.
So there's, there's much more time to dig into.
Several months.
So given several, I guess the question is, given that it's only several months, because this is actually two planners ago that began this, will we be able to populate this with some ranges before it's finalized?
I think, yes, you've asked and that's the answer.
I know, but I didn't, no, I didn't get the, I didn't understand.
Yes, but we, but that information's going to be put in at the last, as close to the final submission as possible so that the number is accurate as possible.
Yeah, we, yeah, we've currently been working on filling out that, that section. We hope to have it at least completed as best to our ability as possible, this be as accurate as we can. And then we'll begin reaching out to the working group with potentially the, probably the, the final, final version, but a more finalized draft with more of the supplementary material that FEMA requires from these, filled out so that we can get their direct input on that. And then, once we're confident, we have all the preliminary materials filled out to the best of the ability of both Lancaster and the Monchiusian Plant Commission, we'll then begin the revision process with MEMA at that point. And it's still open, during that process, it is still open to continuous, you know, updates and revision.
Nope. I would just ask that, Jasmine, I know you sent this out, if you could send this out to boards and commissions and I know it's on our website, again, for people to make sure because the time grows, goes quickly and now it's in a relatively mature version that people can make any tweaks, the earlier the better. I don't want to be tweaking it when it's at MEMA.
No. Yosa?
I'm all set.
Okay. Jonathan or Jasmine, my only questions, and you've sort of run through the timeline, so I won't body with that. And what I'd like, first of all, grateful for everybody who participated in this, all the town departments, all the volunteers, appointed officials, elected officials, town employees, past and present. The MRPC, thank you for your help with this. What I like about projects like this is not only that we now are going to have a hazard mitigation plan that's updated, but we also have these items of critical need for work to be done that we can use almost as well exactly as a to-do list of things that need to get done to address some of the major issues that could face the town. So this isn't just a plan that we need to have, it's a plan that we, we want to have because it'll lead to a stronger, more secure town. So I'm grateful for that. My only question is, is there anything other than our constant vigilance on this process that you need, Jasmine or Kate of the board? I'm assuming that this version for everyone, and I agree with Alex if there are others who haven't yet, although I appreciate you reaching out to all the boards and commissions if they haven't participated yet, we would encourage them to. Is there anything, or does this come sort of with the full recommendation of the working group to keep this moving forward? Is there any?
Yeah, so my, my ask of the board relative to this is to set up a time in the very near future to have a combined meeting with the Public Works Committee. Because as a separately elected board, while Kevin is a member of the working group, it's important to understand their priorities. Much of what's happening here are talking about roadways and infrastructure improvements to culverts and other things that are under their purview. And so as much as we can talk about that, without that committee and without their feedback and without their buy-in, we're essentially, you know, giving them half a loaf.
Right.
Without their input. So before it's finalized and before we adopt some type of schedule that hopefully will feed into the capital plan that we're working on, I think there needs to be a meeting of the minds between the governing bodies.
Indeed. Agreed. All right. I guess at the risk of, excuse me.
Jasmine, where, do you know, I was just looking for this on the website, where would you like, where is it posted?
So this should be under the community development page on the website.
That's right there. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want people, so click on Hazard, for those who are interested, on Hazard and Mitigation Plan 2022. Okay.
Yosa?
Yeah, thank you.
Is anyone in the, I'm glad to open this, Jonathan and Jasmine, I'm glad to open this for a couple of minutes. Hands are already up for any questions.
Two real hands.
For the, from the town, knowing that this is a piece in process. But we are, I'm glad for the next, you know, five minutes or so, we've got folks here for scheduled appointments, but I'm glad to, if you have questions. You just got to stand up, speak loud, tell us your.
Mr. Chairman, George Franz 13, Hufield Drive. I'm super pleased that the town is developing this hazard mitigation plan. And I sort of thought of a couple of things, they may be included under some other category, but chemical spills, we've got trucks, 18-wheelers, we've got businesses that use hazardous materials, et cetera, et cetera. We've got rail going right through the middle of town, so a derailment or, or some spill, chemical spill or something, hazardous material spilled from rail. And I hate to say it, but I think we need to include civil disturbance. You know, it could be a, you know, active shooter, it could be any type of thing, you know, the chief would know best how to address that, but not seeing those listed under the main categories, I just wanted to offer those as possibilities. Thank you.
I appreciate that, George. And I don't want to speak for the working group, but we can certainly get your responses to that. I mean, my, at least from, I remember from the last time I served on this board, I know at least two of them relative to train derailments, well, actually a lot. I mean, I know our, our public safety folks are drilled and focused very much on civil disturbance and dealing with issues like that. It's a good thing to raise, but it's something they do on a regular basis to be prepared. Same, I live on Necro, there's, there's a train problem on Necro, I can't leave my house because if it's blocking all three stops. So I raised this a long time ago and I know that the town is at least drilled and ready to deal with train derailments or train-related breakdowns, things like that. And chemical spills is a very good one to raise. My assumption is that what MRPC did, and I'll ask John, John a few, do you go by John or Jonathan?
Jonathan, I know you're wrong.
All right, good, all right. I'll ask him just to answer that. My guess is that they picked the eight biggest risks that we are in in the order that they were?
Yeah, these are, these are picked as the largest community-wide hazards for the town. So they're not just something that would impact, you know, maybe even one or two neighborhoods, but if there was, if there was a wildfire, drought, or flooding, it could impact the entire community in some places that cut off entire neighborhoods from emergency access. But yeah, the focus is really hazards that serve as a community-wide impact and not just maybe focused on one, one railway. Although, we, in several cases, we do cover additional hazards, even if it's just in the identification of critical infrastructure being exposed to hazards that's noted, especially on some of the maps, some of which are just very recently being finalized. So you, you might see something like that for areas that have been identified as hazardous material locations are located in any place like that. So you'd be able to identify areas that are at higher risk of maybe having a chemical spill or just hazardous material in the area. So that it doesn't at least cover that, that aspect, even if it's not as in-depth as maybe addressing the concerns of flooding for the community.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
To the, to the chair?
Um, who are you asking a question? We're taking another comment, so.
I know, it's just good to respond to Mr. Franz for one second.
Okay, I, all right. We're trying out a new thing, we want, needing to move forward. If you've got something that's relevant that wasn't addressed by somebody else in the room.
No, I just, I encourage everybody to look at the plan and one of the priorities they addressed is railroad in here, so thank you for that.
Mr. Zidek? Thank you, George.
How are you doing? Rob Zidek, one of three Cleveland Roads Fund, we were just talking about this, my wife and I, because if you're familiar with that area, even though we have two ponds near us, we're surrounded by woods, there's only one way to get out of our neighborhood, it's completely through Lunenburg. So as a neighborhood, I suppose we need to figure out, what will we do if big fires started? But my question is, we're actually closer, in fact, we're very close to Shirley stations, not that far away from there, Lunenburg and others. So is there some kind of community coordination for these kinds of procedures? I imagine some people are also close to Sterling and Clinton and other places. So that's my question.
Sure. So I'll take a crack at it and then Chief, may I lean on you? We do have mutual aid agreements with all of the communities around us so that they can help us and that we can help them. And the idea is to be able to share services if there is a large-scale incident in one of the communities nearby and we're able to support them, either by patrolling their community or taking care of them or supporting the incident. Like there's, there are agreements that we have, I believe, at least we used to with all of the surrounding communities and with the state police is also a resource as well. But is there something more?
You still have a verbage?
See, some of it's stuck in here, some of it's stayed.
Thank you, it's good to hear.
Thanks, Rob, appreciate it. But it's a good concern and that's why these plans are really important to work out and deal with. So, thank you. Are there any, we've got about, in this new experimented comment period, we got maybe a minute of somebody on Zoom, but nobody's raised their hands. So, with that, Hazard Mitigation Team, thank you very much, Jonathan. Thank you for the work. We look forward to seeing you again soon, I'm sure. Jasmine, thank you and thanks all of the folks in town who participated, who are on this call. We appreciate your time.
And can we ask Kate to be in touch with the DPW board to make?
Yep, she asked us if we could be in touch, so yes. I consider that already done.
Two thumbs, two thumbs up, okay.
I consider that already done. All right, moving on. We are going to go out of order ever so slightly if we could, because we have at least one appointment present, Mr. Lyle Pierce, Town Constable. And I would like to, like to, I'll take the prerogative of the chair to take that item out of order so that we can let Mr. Pierce, I'm sure he's desperate to hear everything we're talking about for the rest of the meeting, but we might as well jump to item number eight, which is appointments and reappointments. Kate, what do we got? We've got Town Constable, Lyle Pierce, term to expire June 30, 2025 is the appointment we are to make for Lyle, yes?
For that one? And then there's the memorial, I don't know if you're taking.
Let's do this one first and then, yeah, we might as well do the rest of them while we're, while we're at it. So is there a motion to appoint Lyle Pierce as Town, Town Const, did you move it? Jason or somebody else?
Well, I will make a motion to appoint Lyle Pierce to be a constable, term to expire 6/30/2025.
Seem good?
All those in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan, aye. Three, nothing. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate your willingness to serve. All right. Memorial Day Reuse Committee, ad hoc, we have Daniel Laypen, Cynthia LaFave, term to expire 6/30/2025. Thank you. Ron, good to you.
I would make offer a motion to reappoint Daniel Laypen and Cynthia LaFave to a term to expire 6/30/2025.
Seem good?
I'm not sure if they're here.
If they're not, we'll let them know. We sent a nice letter.
Yes, yes. Well, sometimes people come to speak. At first, they are reappointed.
Oh, Daniel is here. Would you like to?
Yes.
Say you don't want to be reappointed?
Wow.
Trying to beg off? Otherwise, you're dangerously close to being reappointed. All right, with that, Mr. Allison? Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan, aye.
Can we, just as, can we put them on a, can we put this committee on a agenda sometime soon so we see how they're doing and what kind of help they might need?
Yes, I'm going to a meeting that is coming up soon, but yes, we can.
Yes.
We have a resignation with, the letter is in the packet for the zoning board of appeals from Ryan Aldridge, is an associate member of the zoning board of appeals. There's nothing really much to do other than acknowledge his service and thank him for the work he's done on ZBA.
I think we make a motion to accept.
Do you have to accept a resignation or?
Yeah, you don't have to.
We can if you like.
And we have to.
Who doesn't love a motion, right?
If you wanted to do that, you may want to decide whether you would like to just wait until the next round of elections or whether you wanted to solicit someone to fill the associate term.
I think we should discuss that with the ZBA and figure out how's it going to fill it. So if there is a motion to accept, I mean, I think he's resigning one way or the other, whether we accept it or not.
As, as we've done in the past, I would offer a motion to accept the resignation of Ryan Aldridge, is an associate member on the ZBA.
Sounds good.
Seem good?
Would love to know what happens if you don't vote to accept it.
He's still resigned.
Well, you never know.
But it's nice.
So Aldridge there.
All those in favor, Mr. Allison? Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan, aye. Three, zero, zero. Okay, now we are back on track, I believe. Nothing more than appointments and resignations, yes?
Correct.
Okay, so back to article number four, Boards, Committees, and Departments Reports, Town Meeting Committee Updates and Administrative Cleanups. This is something, and I'll kick it to Kate because we had a discussion about this at town meeting, a number of things were done that requires some cleanup. Things like COA membership, board membership change, that's going to the legislature, all those types of things are happening, so that's good. For us, the makeup of the, or the charge of the EDC has changed, which to my mind makes it a new committee with the same name and. And, um, I would love the discussion about whether or not, my mind is that we should re, um, constitute it with the new charge, making sure, because some of the members may not agree with the new charge, may not want to serve under the new charge. So we should give them an opportunity certainly to, um, reapply and then open it up for new membership. But that's just my take only, and it wouldn't be had we not had a vote at the town meeting that changed the charge for the EDC. So to me, it seems as if it's a new, and the membership, yes. Um, uh, the charge and the membership.
So either or, either the membership or the change in number of persons requires a vote of the board to disband the current committee and then you can take a separate vote to then re-up the new committee and you can solicit persons who want to serve on that committee and they can be the same persons who are serving on this other committee, but understanding that you're limited to five, whereas the, the former committee had seven, seven available seats.
And I wasn't around when the former committee was constituted.
Nor was I.
Right, so we're, we're playing a little hunting pack here. Right, exactly. So my understanding and Jason was, my understanding is this was sort of an ad hoc committee to support the board and the town. And this effort at town meeting, which I was not on the board for, but I was at town meeting, was to make it an official committee of the town, which therefore then is why we have to shift. Jason's given me thumbs up for an understanding of how we got to where we are. So, um, that would be my take that we, um, uh, and you tell me how to phrase it, but we.
So you'll need to vote that pursuant to the town meeting vote, you are disbanding?
And then we can begin.
Economic, uh, what was it? Develop ad hoc committee? Because it wasn't an official, and then, uh, and the members of that committee are relieved of duty effective the date of the vote, so today. And then you have the ability to take a, a separate vote is also pursuant to the town meeting article.
Okay.
To develop the, uh, an official economic development committee.
Consistent with the article from town meeting.
And appointed by the board of select.
Copy that, okay. So I'm going to try to suggest a motion that one of you fine people can make. Um, or not, it's entirely up to you. Uh, but the motion that I would hope one of you would make would be that pursuant to the town meeting of May 2nd, 2022, um, uh, pursuant to the vote at the, at town meeting, May 2nd, 2022, um, uh, the motion to dissolve the ad hoc economic development committee and relieve its members of their duties and responsibilities effective today, with an effort to, uh, I'm sorry, no, that's just it. That's one vote, then we got another, then we got another one after that. Ends up July 13th. So moved.
Um, second?
Second. Now, while we're in discussion on this motion, I just want to point out that there will be more motions to then, to then constitute, uh, consistent with the, uh, town meeting vote, uh, EDC that will not be ad hoc, but will be an official committee of the town appointed by the select board. Uh, and all the existing members are free to apply for membership there.
Got it.
So we are still voting on that motion. Um, any further discussion on the motion? Uh, alright, uh, all those in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan, aye. So three, zero, zero. Uh, now we want a motion that pursuant to vote at town, uh, annual town meeting uh, on May 2nd, 2022, a motion to establish an economic development committee for the town of Lancaster with a membership of five people, um, appointed by the select board of Lancaster.
In staggering terms.
In staggering terms, in staggering terms.
Their terms and agreements for the.
So moved. Is there a second? Okay, any discussion?
Um, just to be clear, that this is according to the powers and duties, while it is not an ad hoc committee because it was, uh, passed at the, at the town meeting, it's still an advisory committee?
Yes.
And it spells out, so when we, when we post this, it would be good to post it with us just so people know the reporting.
Yeah, no, agreed a hundred percent. So when we do post it, posting the charge, because the charge has changed slightly from my understanding, from when it was created as an ad hoc, that's going to be really important because we want folks to apply who want to help bring that charge to life, right?
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Uh, all those in favor, Mr. Allison? Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan, aye. Three, zero, zero.
Thank you all for your service.
Thank you all for your service and we hope folks reapply.
I have some clarifying questions.
You sure can, yeah.
So, um, I understand you want it posted. How long would you like to solicit, um, letters of interest? And do you want those folks to just come forward and name only similar to the government study committee? Or would you like to meet and speak with them, similar to the planning board?
So my preference, my preference, and I, and obviously we're a board, um, my preference would be this is important and that we give some time to it. I don't know if it's, it also summertime, a lot of people on vacation, so I don't want people to get back from vacation in two weeks and realize they missed an opportunity. So I yield to your recommendation on timing, but I do think it would be best, for me at least, to get something in writing from them as they traditionally would do and then have an opportunity, if they so wish, for them to come in and meet with the board and make their case for why, um, they, uh, they should be appointed. Uh, I don't know that has to be as long a process as we did for the planning board, but I do think it's really important that we're all in alignment as we move forward on, on something like this. Um, Jason or Alex, any comments, thoughts, contradictions?
I would suggest, given the fact that it is summer, that we extend, as, as you suggested, a lengthier, um, recruitment time than we usually do. So in order to make it to our agenda, we're meeting in August. Uh, I'm trying to think. So if we, if we extend it to August 19th, that would make our last August meeting, I believe. And invite, I do agree, I think, to be honest with you, I think in all boards and commissions, especially new boards and commissions, um, we should make people, give people a clear understanding of what the charge is, so people should come in or zoom in and.
And just as important for us to hear from them, they should hear from us.
Correct, correct. Yeah, communication's two ways, but we need to do it.
Indeed. Well, Kate's looking at the calendar.
So if you have it, if you have it until August 19th, that does not give you an extraordinary amount of time to review those letters before your meeting on the 23rd. As long as that is fine with the board, then that is certainly doable.
Are we meeting on?
The ninth, the ninth, I'm sorry, Wednesday, the 10th and the 24th. I apologize, you'll have.
You'll have five days.
Effectively.
But that would not, yeah, so.
Two business days.
May I suggest, sorry, um, you go ahead.
Are we moving our meeting days from Mondays?
I was under the impression our meeting days are Wednesdays.
I don't know when our meeting days are. I've, I've often asked that, so I just am here, so why not just watch?
Well, let's, 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 um, put a cap on this question first and we can conquer that one next. Um, if we get it to the 10th of August, that's four weeks. Let's do the, if we do the 12th of August, that will give us a full week and a half to review the submissions. Does that make sense?
That's fine.
Oh, Jason, do you have any comments, thoughts, question, okay, thumbs up, two thumbs. Alright, so let's give them to the 12th of August to submit. Any other clarifying questions? I don't know how you need to clarify questions, those motions were clear.
No, I think, uh, I think I'm perfectly set.
Clearly well thought out by the chair. Okay, alright. Um, fantastic. Uh, financial audit advisory committee, uh, that was also, remind me?
That was.
The town meeting?
Correct, and I believe that Alex has the most amount of knowledge on this, as I was not here when it was discussed.
Alright, and you asked for it to be put on the agenda?
I did.
How's that? Here it is.
So last year, after many meetings and lengthy debate, um, we voted to recruit for a, uh, audit committee. To refresh, to, for your benefit, because you both aren't here, the audit committee was, um, is the brainchild or the suggestion of the inspector general's office, Department of Revenue. It just today sent your link. You probably haven't had a chance to sit down and, uh, really enjoy. Put your feet up and watch.
I had actually had the pleasure of seeing that in a training before, so.
Yeah, it's actually, um, about an hour of fun, in my opinion, but of course I have a strange sense of.
You say so.
I have a strange sense of fun. Um, what I'd like to do, and we had, um, we had very good responses to.
To the audit committee?
To the audit committee response. So, and, and it is timely because we need to begin, the audit, what the audit committee will be doing is selecting a new auditor and going through the charge for the audit. And the inspector general and the DOR want this to be an independent citizens-based committee with some professional knowledge, such as, um, accountants, somebody from the finance committee. And in fact, that was the impetus, one of the impetus between changing the finance committee bylaws so that they were allowed to serve on them. So I would like to dust off those, um, applicants, you know, the resumes of those applicants or their letters and reach out to them and, um, ask and solicit new ones. And one of the good ways so people know what they're getting into is I sent the link for, that Kate's had the opportunity to watch. You get some popcorn.
Okay.
And you can watch it on the, is to, um, put that back up. I looked on, we still have the solicitation. I'd like to put, with the solicitation.
Got it.
The posting is there, but it doesn't link to anything. It's just a line, it doesn't have any kind of thing. But I think it would be helpful as far as people to know what they're getting into, to be able to look at that.
So, yeah, no, so yes, um, uh, I agree. My question is, and we, um, I've been a part of a lot of audits in my career. My question is the charge for this advisory board, financial audit advisory board, if it is, if it is as simple as, um, community members with a knowledge base that's relevant, helping the town pick an auditor.
It's more than that. They pick an audit, they pick an auditor, they help direct the focus of the audit. Um, it's quite thorough, actually, and you'll understand that.
Okay, let me, I'll take a look at it and then we can, um, yeah, I'll take a look at the hour-long video you sent.
Well, so.
If you can find the charge for the committee.
The video is, um, is sort of separate from the work that was done before. I think that the board needs to talk a little bit, well, my request would be that, um, I would perhaps, but because I wasn't here and I wasn't part of the discussions, that I'm able to go back and watch some of the videos of the discussions because some of the things that are being talked about are, in my experience, not things that the audit committee has been responsible for doing. But namely, getting involved in the, in the choosing and the solicitation of an auditing firm, because that's a procurement issue. And so if that's in fact what we, what the town wants to do, that's, that's fine, but we need to put language in there that says that it isn't going to be because this firm is liked best by these people, that, that it's, that it's consistent with doing an RFQ and, and that language is missing in what was in there. And I think that it's important to have it in there just for our own.
I think just to, I think anything we do has, of course, has to follow 3B and be just be clearly law-abiding.
It's just missing from it, so I just would feel more comfortable if we went just clear.
If you could send to the board all the materials you've been able to gather on the, the minutes notes, charge, all that, to bring us all up to speed and remind us where we are. And then we should have, um, more in-depth conversation about this.
Okay, and I'm also finding a, a little bit of a difficult time finding the applications from the persons who.
When was this?
I don't know. So I was kind of hoping, Alex, if you had like a timeframe and where are those letters of interest?
Probably in the materials, but I'll look at them because we did get, and they were, some of them were just sent to us in emails.
To your select board emails perhaps? Or was it, were they forwarded to another town person?
Um, I think they went right to the office, so.
Okay.
Alright, so there seem to be, there's some building.
These are what happens when there's an turnover here, so.
There's turnover, there's, there's got to be some rebuilding.
I don't want to leave someone out.
And we don't want to, and we don't want to do the process halfway. So let's, um, let's gather the information we can and, um, uh, address it, or at least start the conversation. I don't want to repost or do any of that stuff until we have a very clear sense of charge while we're asking people to apply to do, or if they've already applied, what they're asking them to do.
So perhaps I can ask Jay Moody and you and Jason to just do a quick look of the emails and see if there's anything in there that jumps out at you that you could forward to me?
I have, yeah, the basic discussion of what we did, but the, I, and not, I'm not trying to be fresh, but I would, I'm going to assume there's a file in our office that, or in the board of selectman's office that has that. I know, I know you looked, so.
I can assure you, there is not.
So.
But I would love it if there were, so I'm going to build one. And I'm hoping that if you have anything that you can say, I will.
This is a good opportunity for us to build a file on it and do it succinctly and correctly. So, um, we look forward to continuing this conversation.
Can we, because this is of some urgency in the procurement, we're all to find it, getting a new auditor and stewing all this, um, can we put this on the next agenda?
We can, I can't promise that it'll be actionable, but yes, we can.
Okay.
Because it depends on how long it's going to take to gather the information.
I can certainly provide, well, I'm going to be on vacation next week, so as long as, um, it's alright that you get it, you know, a few days before the meeting, the information that, you know, I, I have as far as the charge and whatnot.
We can definitely put it on, I'm just not promising that we're going to be able to take action on it. But I promise, what I will promise is as soon as we have it and we can take action, that we will.
It's something that I feel strongly about and, and we had passed and we talked about for a year or so, early, but no pressure.
We're just, we just got here.
You have to be, you have to be, you have to be comfortable with it.
We, yeah, exactly. And you asked to put it on the agenda and I put it on the agenda right away, so. Yeah, so, so we, are you clear? Do you have a very clear, muddy instruction on where we go from here?
Crystal.
Crystal clear, fantastic, alright. Uh, any other comments, thoughts, concerns about that before we move on to our next item in Boards, Committees and Department Reports?
I do just want to interject before I forget. So according to our policies and procedures just around, regular board meetings, the first and third Mondays of each month.
Okay, again, we said we were going to talk about that later. We're going to go through the agenda and we're going to go through.
I thought that was about, okay, schedule.
No, no, yeah, no.
Okay, alright.
Um, we're going to talk about that later.
Okay.
Great. Um, anything further, Mr. Allison, uh, on financial audit? I'm assuming, hearing no, you're all set.
All set, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, alright, next item is discussion and next steps relative to, um, what is known as the DCAM parcels. Alex, you also, I have some questions and comments on this as well, but you asked to add this to the agenda, so I will yield to you for the time that you desire to consume.
Back in the time we call, pre-Kate, pre-Steve.
The Dark Angels.
Yes. The discussion of, um, acquiring the DCAM parcel came up and, um, passed at town meeting.
Yes.
I was the point person on this and have worked with officials from DCAM. Um, Jeff Nutting did, and worked with town council and did an admirable job. Our deadline to, um, to take the property is December of 2023. Um, I met with Jasmine and Brian and some, uh, had some help, some, many citizens have offered to come forward and help, but I am concerned, um, I know Kate was working, Kate, you were looking into some stuff. I was hoping you might have some updates, um, because we also, Kate sat down with us as well and was, um, looking into some things. So I wanted to see the status and just say that I'm really concerned because what, in order to take possession of this property, we need to have some good procurement. There's, um, as far as looking at, um, planning, planning dollars and committees and so on, if we decide to do that, and it has to pass a town meeting.
Right.
So.
So what, what's your?
So my question is just sort of where was that? When I last met, we last met with Kate was Jasmine and, um, Jasmine, Brian and I, and we haven't gone any further to my knowledge. And I'm just concerned, I'm putting that on the radar.
Do you know when that was?
Kate, when, when did we meet? About a month ago?
In, yeah, in early June.
Uh, do you have a question?
Sure, yep.
Yeah, I, I guess I'm a little confused. So, so Alex, I thought you were the liaison for the DCAM. I guess if I was looking for a DCAM question, I would go to you. So are we, are we still good with all of that? Because it sounds like you're out of this, out of, out of sync. And I just want to make sure that we organize properly and we're doing, and maybe I, maybe I misunderstood where we're at, but I thought that these were.
Kate has a strong procurement background and wanted to make sure to look into things because we sat down and talked about getting, or talking with a consultant, um, to try to talk about drawing out an RF or just drawing out an RFQ or an R, uh, an RFP for the. or an RFP for the process to, because you partner with a developer in this and there are people who are interested, but we haven't gone any further. So that was my understanding, what we're waiting for, but I could be wrong.
Oh, Jasmine, where's your hand up?
Jasmine.
Sorry, Kate's here, Jasmine, hold on. Do you have any comment or would you yield to Jasmine?
So the conversation that we had was less about maybe the procurement and more about where the funding is coming from because if we wanted to solicit, my understanding sitting in that meeting, and it's the only meeting that I've had about the Decam property, was that we would be best served by having a comprehensive plan of what we could do with the property and we would be very best served by having multiple versions of what we could do with the property. And so there was a, a lot of discussion, unofficial discussion among certain boards and committees and, and members of the community that that, you know, couldn't be that hard to get by and someone might wanna do it. And thus far, we hadn't been wildly successful in having anybody that wants to come in and do that for free. That said, when I was at that meeting, I, I think folks were talking about something along the 10 or $12,000 mark and I was just trying to be realistic that I thought that a, a plan of that magnitude for one iteration, let alone several iterations on a property that large and one that has some remediation that needs to be done and a lot of demolition, you know, would, would probably creep to the over $100,000 in my best estimation. And further looking at it, I tried to, to just come up with just some, some dollars just based on DOT numbers and the prevailing wage scales. And because of the rate of inflation, we're looking more at closer to sort of 155, 160. So I didn't know what else that I was supposed to do with that. I'm hesitant to put out anything that, you know, would make it seem to a developer or anyone else that we had the means to pay for that because it then would, I think, not do well by our credibility for any other future projects.
Yeah, that's good.
That's sort of where we're at. It's, it's inexpensive, worthwhile.
Yes.
Just somewhat expensive.
Yeah, let me ask Jasmine, you had your hand up, but then it went down. I'm assume, I read that in Zoom text as Kate said what you were going to say.
Well, I do concur with what Kate said. I do recall that meeting exactly the way that she just described it. But also in addition to that, I've been working with MRPC to work on verbiage for a potential rezoning of that property for mixed-use residential, potentially multifamily use. And this was through a grant that I received earlier in the year. So this is at no cost to the town that we are getting this work done. And they are drafting up potential zoning that we may want to adopt at some point. And I do have at least one developer who does understand our financial situation and would be very interested in working with the town. We're, MRPC, I believe, is coming to us with, in August with some draft verbiage. So we are moving in some forward progress with the site in a, in a good direction. It may not be a, a financial solution yet at this time, but we are taking some of the base steps in order to get the site developed in the meantime.
To get developed for housing only?
Mixed use, mixed use. So housing, small business, things of that nature.
That's right.
So we're not going to necessarily attract anyone to do any type of build-out analysis or design or anything without having that, that zoning piece in place because it's sort of throwing good money after bad.
Because they're developing something that's not zoned for and you might as well get that zoning piece done, yes.
That has been the, the general theme.
My, have we had a conversation with Mass Development? Have we had them come and tour the site and meet with them? Cause I've reached out to, to Dan Rivera, who's the CEO over there, who used to be the mayor in Lawrence, and told him it'd be great to have him come down and take a look. And he was thrilled with the idea and glad to have a, have some conversation. And I think they do projects, sorry, I think they do projects like this all the time and they work with communities and developers. And I think they might at least be able to give us a good sense of, you know, timelines, what we can be doing, the next steps, and might be able to open some doors for us and provide some opportunity.
So I have had some discussions with Mass Development, but it would be helpful, I think, the reason I wanted this on the agenda is to bring it to the cost that we talked about. And Kate did say you're way off on your cost estimates and this is, and this is what we're doing. And my understanding, I apologize, Kate, was that you were gonna look at what the cost could be and how procurement, if, if the board needed it or wanted to go that way, discuss it. So I think we need to sit down and put this back on every agenda. I'll meet with Jasmine to discuss the updates and we can continue the conversations, but we need to do it, just realize it's fast. It doesn't sound, it sounds like a long way away, but it's not a long way away.
No, I think we all remember that, yeah. All right, so I'm, I'm gonna continue my efforts to get Mass Development here to have some conversations and I'll loop the members of the board in, and of course Kate and Jasmine would, will be critical parts of that conversation as well. All right. We now have, do we have anybody here? What I'm trying to do is a new practice of if anybody's in the room, that we address their concern or issue. Like, is there anybody here I don't believe, well, oh!
Public comment?
No, well, that's my, I understand.
No, I know what you're talking about.
I, I, that's what I'm trying to say. Which is that I'm endeavoring to take people who are in the room to give, out of respect for their time before moving on to things that can be done at any time during the meeting. So that being said, we have under Administration, Budget and Policy, a proposal for acquisition of a new police cruiser using ARPA funding, or it's an ARPA funding potential. And we have Chief Everett Moody here to present on such an item. And I apologize, Chief, I just see you normally at meetings all the time, so I just assumed you were here as a fan. I just wanted to observe.
Mr. Chair, before the, the chief goes, I wanted to be clear that there was a big push, it, it appears before both of our times. I guess we'll have to come up with some, some type of name, but where department heads were effectively asked for a wish list. And there were two categories, one was nice to have and one was need immediately. And my understanding is that was given to the former town administrator and then to the interim town administrator, which was great. This, this is the final emergency style for ARPA funding that's coming before you. The other was the school boilers, some infrastructure improvements for IT for hybrid and Zoom meetings. And now the chief can, can describe this. The other reasons or funding mechanisms that we could use for ARPA funding, I'd like to present as part of the capital plan and that is upcoming in the next month or so. There's a, a place that's in the capital plan to talk about where the funding is going to come from, so not all of it is, is tax dollar-based. But I think that that is a much more systematic way of approaching large-scale capital improvements. And so this is the last one-off that I would be supportive of. There are many, many things that we could do with ARPA money and capital funding. And I think once you see a comprehensive plan, you'll, you'll be able to see that there are many more things than we're able to fund. But that would be when the discussion about what, what should be using ARPA funds, what we should be borrowing for, what we can use inside the levy limit would be there. So I just wanted to preface it with, this isn't gonna be that every meeting we come in with a one-off.
Death by a thousand cruisers.
So, and that, and that doesn't mean that this isn't, this isn't immensely important, but some circumstances have changed, which the chief can tell you about from when this was brought up and sort of on the wish list to, to where we are now. And, and we really are in a crisis point here.
Well, and I appreciate, the context, I think, is really important to how we got here, for myself, for everybody else. The, this is, the ARPA funding is, and we deal with ARPA funding at work and everybody's got ARPA funding, everyone's got ARPA fever. And what I appreciate about this approach and, and folding it in with the, with the overall capital approach and the capital budget approach is the comprehensive nature of it. That it's not just, we got a windfall, let's find ways to spend it as best we can, but that it's a very thoughtful process to say, yes, we wanna spend it on something like that, but is there a better resource or a better funding mechanism that is better? Like, I'm a big believer in one-time dollars for one-time things or things that will set you up to bring in more resources. And so I love the idea that it's folded, the conversation folds in with a bunch of other funding mechanisms and sort of a global approach. I remember when I first served on the board a thousand years ago, we didn't have any capital budget planning at all and we really dug in on things like boilers and, and even, I remember leases for, for copiers that would come up and the whole world would collapse because we didn't have any money for it. So I'm a big believer in what you're doing from the capital planning perspective and I like the fact that rather than doing one-offs, that we are gonna have a comprehensive approach to how we're spending these ARPA dollars because they are a, a, a big investment from the federal government in the work that we do and we wanna make sure that we're spending the, the dollars wisely. And I do appreciate that this is, that this is the last one-off before, and we're saying, I'm gonna say it a few more times, is the last one-off.
Yes, sir.
Before the comprehensive approach to how we're gonna spend our ARPA funding, but also how we're going to address large-scale capital projects, large and small capital projects. So.
Well, with that being said, thank you, Kate, for that explanation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to present this tonight. And I agree typically we would be putting in a cruiser request annually with our capital budget. This particular decision was made above my pay grade to have it removed from that and it was suggested that we would put it in with, with ARPA funding. The reason why this is such an emergency purchase for us is we have, we have an aging fleet. In 2021, we did not receive funding to replace a cruiser. That had a detrimental effect on our entire fleet. The car that we're looking to get rid of has 147,000 miles on it, which that wouldn't seem to be too much except for the engine hours were over 14,000. Our cruisers sit roadside where we're running traffic, idling, and it, it does a lot of damage to the vehicles. So we're, we're looking to replace that, that car with a new car, a hybrid car, to help save. And we're hoping to get your support in getting that one. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
I appreciate that. Chief, I'll turn to our remote colleague, Mr. Allison, if you're, if you're all set. Thank you very much, sir. A fantastic, well, in fairness, I like, I get a lot of two thumbs up from Jason, it's pretty good, makes me feel good. Yeah, exactly. Ms. Turner, do you have any questions for the chief?
Well, Chief and I spoke earlier today. So, because I wanted to forewarn him, and he wasn't surprised because he's heard me at every meeting that he comes to, that akin to what you were saying, I don't believe in spending one-time money on reoccurring expenses. And long ago, we agreed that cruisers needed to be replaced on a regular basis and should be.
Back when we served together.
We did.
We added one a year to the budget.
We did. And somehow that fell off. So I appreciate the predicament and I understand where you're at. So contrary to what I said earlier, I may be persuaded. However, I just want, so people, I want people to understand, and I know I had the privilege of sitting in with Kate's initial capital discussion and it was excellent. And talking about how to handle this in a more thoughtful manner going forward, not just for cruisers, but for everything. I think you used the example Kate of tires on, which is, which is great because this is something that we haven't done and we need to do. Initially, we had, how much ARPA money, do you remember?
Uh, yes, sorry.
I, I should have that tattooed on me.
You'd have to walk around with a mirror.
Just you sick kid.
About 785,000, give or take.
You mean that we've spent out of?
There were two deposits, so are you, are you looking?
No, a total, a total.
Let me just, I thought you were speaking for last year, sorry.
No, 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 no. So so far, what we have, just so people understand what we are talking about in pre-Kate, pre-Steve, we set aside money for an ambulance, we paid that. I'm assuming that that has been set aside from ARPA. We set aside money from, it was about 1.2.
In total, we received from ARPA?
Yeah, a little over. I think we received, yeah, a couple million maybe, but whatever.
Well, so you might be total.
The total, I'm talking about our total.
Well, so there's CARES and then there's ARPA. And so they're due two different funds.
Oh, I understand that.
Okay, so it's 1.1 million 207,881 dollars.
From ARPA?
Correct.
Perfect. And how much, sorry, how much of that was spent thus far?
350,000 on an ambulance, 150,000 on a school boiler, 70,000 on servers and IT and the police, potential vehicle.
Didn't we spend, was the 250 for the library study out of ARPA?
Nope. There was 70,000 out of capital for the library study. I'm not quite sure of the 250.
So that gets us down to 70, something like that. What's, what's 16?
Who's counting?
71,000 dollars between rounds.
And not, not now, I don't expect you to do this, but we had some things that did not get approved, we accept, accepted were gonna get approved for CARES money. For example, those 70,000 dollar sign boards got kicked back and other things. I know that a cruiser is typically approved through municipal ARPA funding and I'm sure that you will look at that before we.
It's signed, sealed, delivered, we just need to sign.
Yeah, we had a lot of.
We see the votes.
No, we had, we had a lot of mistakes with the CARES money as far as that goes, so it was just wanna make sure that it's really good.
ARPA's very generous.
It was, it was by Kate and Steve, so.
Of course, of course, of course. It will be fine now.
It better be.
But, so, and I would just encourage the board as we look at our budget. I know I don't have to curtail Kate that cruisers are a high priority and they stay in the budget.
We weren't around in 2011.
Never get an argument from me on that. I don't know the nature of why it was cut and I.
I wasn't in that budget.
Oh, you weren't, okay.
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't cut routine and vehicle replacement maintenance.
I've been singing that song for 20 something years and I will continue to.
Those to me are reoccurring capital expenses, so.
Exactly.
There's a line for that now.
Yes, there's a line for that.
Exactly. So with that, any further, well, any further discussion before we have a motion? Is there a motion?
I offer a motion to approve the purchase of a new police cruiser from ARPA funding as requested by Chief Moody.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all who's in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Carrigan?
Aye.
Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you very much, thank you for the lead.
We appreciate it.
Ham and egg.
Ham and egg, yeah, exactly. All right, well, while we're in Admin, Budget and Policy, since I like to check all of it off at once, Minuteman Technical High School Budget Update and Correspondence.
Yeah, so I had sent a letter to the board, I'm not sure if it ended up in your pocket or not, this was, oh my, I wanna say three and a half weeks ago. Unfortunately, the letter came in from the administration at Minuteman and asked for an affirmative vote regarding a 2.1% increase and that it was due back in three days. So I had written back and said, you know, that it had been received in the office, but that we didn't have a meeting that was scheduled within the three days. We weren't going to have a quorum available within three days. And the response to that was we only needed, they only needed the majority of the districts to have it and so they didn't need to, we didn't need to worry because they, they felt like they had the majority of the districts. And so there's nothing more to do unless you would like to have me draft a letter that is either in support or not in support and send it off. But I just wanna be clear that the check is already in the mail, as it were.
I mean, good news is we don't have to burden ourselves by taking a vote. Bad news is it was approved without our participation. I will say, and I'm gonna say this, Minuteman is a, is a large expenditure for us, for the students who go there, it's a great school and we support it there. Any folks who are interested in helping the town relative to Minuteman things, whether it's serving on the Minuteman School Committee in the future at some point, reach out to Kate, myself, email me. We wanna make sure we continue to have strong presence. We've had great representation on the school, the school committee for a long time and generally we, we are grateful. And I know she'll continue to serve as long as we need her to, but she's been doing her best and her duty for a long time. best and her duty for a long time. So it's unfortunate, but thames the brakes, to quote Boris Johnson.
So this isn't the first time we've been in an 11th-hour crisis with Minuteman and their financial request. It came in with the building frequently and playing fields, and Minuteman is an excellent school. Lancaster sends a lot of students there. It's also the most expensive trade school, I think, in Massachusetts. I know they pay the teachers the best, and that's good, you get paid well, you get quality teachers. I think that we need to talk to them. I mean, they understand, they have 17, I think, still cities and towns, right?
Nineteen, yes.
Nineteen, okay. So understanding the process of government, giving us three days to act to something is not reasonable. So I guess I would prefer to send a thank you for the notification, but we want to be able to actively participate.
So good news is, I did send that and copied you all to just say that, you know, well, I can't speak for the board as the administrator, anything that has a budgetary impact, even of a relatively small nature, you know, in the grand scheme of things, still should be able to be discussed and vetted publicly. And it was sort of met with a, sorry, not sorry.
We got 10 votes for that on Twitter.
We have registered your complaint, and we thank you.
I was glad for your response, because I thought it warranted a response. I don't think, I don't think you're going to get much more if you send a, if you spend time penning a lovely letter, but I agree with Alex that they've, we've got to be as engaged as we can, but if they don't, then I'm engaging us. So I would just recommend that you, you know, dig in, maybe have a call or a meeting with them to just talk about.
They do have a new superintendent that's starting in August, and I know that that superintendent had said that, you know, that she wanted to meet with the area administrators and select boards, and I think, you know, that was one of the things I just, in participating in those interviews at my former community that I worked at, we were also a Minuteman community, and so since we were in a town manager transition, I was somebody that served on that committee, and so I, that was something that was very apparent to a lot of, particularly the smaller communities, that just sort of felt like they were delivered a bill and didn't have a lot, that they got to contribute to even just the conversation or anything that was acknowledged.
I think one of the things that we can do to have more leverage is to rekindle or join Tri-Town again, because we typically have a good information sharing about Minuteman and Ashoba, and since that is such a big impact to our budget, education is a huge impact to our budget, it behooves us to work cooperatively with Bolton and Stowe. I know we've gotten out of that habit, but I think we should probably try to reach out and see if they, if we could do that again. So the 2.5%, I know while, while we own it, what is the impact, just roughly, so people understand, because it's 2.5% of a big number.
Well, it's on our, on our assessment and our students coming in. So, and so, are you saying that the letter was not in? I can find it.
Yeah. We'll, we will let folks know by the end of this meeting.
Okay.
Well, by some.
Or sometime soon, what that number is. But it was a, you know, it's an unfortunate thing, we will make efforts to try to get them to communicate, but as we say in, in the game, numbers are numbers, and they have the numbers to get what they wanted. This was always the case with, and remains the case sometimes with the Ashoba budget of two other times, and I remember the years when we tried to always schedule our town meetings to the same time so that we could try to influence it and try to win over one of the other towns, but if the majority of towns approve it, they approve it, but we should work, we should endeavor to, to strengthen those relationships and go from there. But we will get you the number. Good people paying attention.
So the, it almost never works to my benefit, but for whatever reason, Wi-Fi is really working today. So the technical school district excess and deficiency was certified in the amount of 1,478,730 by the DOR, and so the Minuteman School Committee voted to appropriate $500,000 from the certified excess and deficiency to be transferred to the capital stabilization, so it increases the budget by a corresponding number, which equates to somewhere in the 77 to 89 hundred-dollar range, but we will get a certified amount once they, once they do it. So again, it's not an insurmountable amount, but again, but, you know, the smaller communities like us would like to be able to know and talk about.
Well, we just want the town to know, if it was not a, you know, $300,000 bill that was shoved under our door at the last second, it was under $100,000.
And they were nice enough to draft the letter of acceptance that all you had to do was sign.
Well, they're not kind to them. If they had not taken the time doing that and just sent it to us a little earlier, maybe we could have acted enough.
And, yeah, and for the record, they said, let me see, that they need it no later than the end of business on June 29th, and this was received on June 24th at 4:37 PM.
Oh, well, and that was a Friday?
It was, yes, yeah.
Okay, well, we've beaten that one to death, so we can move on. We will take all the steps necessary to improve the relationships, and you will take the appropriate steps. Well, all right, public comment period, we will open now, and ask folks, we'll go to the, we'll go to the room first, because you were kind enough to drive here, or walk. I'll maybe ask this drive for both of you. So we'll, what I'm going to try to do with this is stick with the timing that former Chairman Allison had. What I ask of folks at this meeting and meetings moving forward is grace and kindness in comments, that also we value each other's time, and if a point has been made, there is no need to resurrect the same exact point and keep making it over and over again. We're welcome to receive public comments through email and all that, but I want to make sure that we have a respectful tone, as always. When I was running for this office, I talked about how I never questioned the motives of the person across from me, so I, I don't do that now. And I hope, all I ask of those participating are that they come to the table or to the Zoom with good intent, in an effort to share comments or ask questions with that good intent, and not in an effort to do personal attacks, professional attacks, any attacks of any kind, because they won't, I don't believe they lead to good public discourse and debate. And so just as long as I'm chair, I won't abide the negativity or comments, so I will now yield to, and I hope, I enjoy public comment period, I've enjoyed it throughout my entire career, I enjoy hearing from folks, but what we need to do as both here in Lancaster and really around the country, is we need to lower the temperature of discourse here. Everything isn't an assault, and we need to realize that when we're presenting our comments, we're doing so hopefully with an eye toward improving our community. You all are participating in this meeting because you want to help make Lancaster a better place, because you love this town presumably, and I just want us to look through that lens when we're participating in public comment, and I reserve the right as chair to step in if I feel like someone is not coming to the table with that level of, of approach to commenting, or frankly, to engagement in a meeting that I chair. So with that, George's hand was up first. Hey, George?
George Fons, 13, High Hill Drive.
Oh, sorry, George, I'm going to, it's going to be four minutes, I'll let you know when you got a minute, but I'm not going to.
I won't take that long.
You're always very good, thank you.
I hope that, you know, since I'm no longer a member of the EDC, which has now been disbanded for reasons I understand, I would have hoped that the EDC would have input into the charge for the new committee.
Okay.
And so those folks that were members of the committee, I'm fairly sure some of them will probably, you know, send comments to the, to the chair or the committee about the charge, which is very important, because we specifically need to know what responsibilities and what expectations are on for the EDC. The DCAM was a perfect example of that, as I indicated at the previous meeting, we had 13 different projects that we were trying to look at, keep track of, and move forward to make some recommendations for, with no real support whatsoever at that point. But I'm hoping now that we have a new town administrator and, and, you know, we're starting to fill out the ranks, there should be, there should be a clear connect point between the EDC and the town administration, et cetera, et cetera. We would like to help, or the EDC would like to help, in whatever manner is most efficient and effective. And so, you know, I just make those suggestions in the hope that, that the new Economic Development Committee will, will have an opportunity to really have some positive input.
No, I appreciate, yeah, I appreciate that, George. And that's consistent with sort of how I'm looking at it too, and so we should make sure we keep on top of that, but I really appreciate that, that input. You didn't raise your hand, Rob, but I'm just assuming you will. Okay, there you are.
Actually, Rob Zaid, 133, actually, I can split this conversation. It may not take more than four minutes total, but it may.
Why don't you take your.
I want to have people have a chance.
Yeah, why don't you take, sure, why don't you, I'm going to even restart, since we've discussed the process for 15 seconds. Why don't you take your first four minutes, and I would ask if anybody's on the screen who would like to make a comment, if you could throw your hand up, and if there's not a hand up, then we can let you keep on rolling. If there is, maybe we just take a break there, let them speak, and then we'll go.
More than five or six total, but you're paying attention.
Okay, we'll do our best.
Rob Zaid, 133, Mr. Good evening. Thank you. More than financial, more than housing, more than environmental, more than traffic, and even more than government operations, our most critical crisis today may be bandwidth overload. And what's taking up most of that volume are all of the components that are directly or indirectly related to this tentative fall special town meeting. For that reason, I ask the select work to at least think about, and ultimately maybe discuss the net benefits of withdrawing the resulting article. I ask this as a representative of the thousands of Lancaster residents who have not already decided on a vote on that one, who don't have the plethora of information that we need to analyze our choices and make our decisions. You may not recognize the incredible importance to Lancaster's future depending on our meeting presence and our vote, who are heavily engaged in so many other critical activities, and last, but by all means, not least, those who do not live here yet, who obviously cannot vote, but whose livelihoods would be significantly impacted by the meeting outcomes. The early fall is when school starts up again, as students, parents, and teachers alike put forth the efforts to kick off a successful school year. This includes the initiation of many extracurricular activities, such as sports, theater, or just chilling with friends. Early fall is also a popular time for different businesses to hold or attend conferences. After that, our busy preparation for two areas scary events this fall, Halloween and the midterm elections. Keeping in mind, keeping in mind that although it was promised late last year, no voters guide has ever been produced, and for good reason. It's way too complicated for any one, two, or even 10 people to establish in time with the requisite clarity. So if it's too complicated to publish by people somewhat in the know, how in the world can we hope to get thousands of voters that we need to be motivated enough and informed enough to put a hold on all of our critical activities so we can choose the path of our future? I recall one planning board member during a meeting in late 2019 issuing a warning about having critical zoning meetings outside the annual town meeting. I believe the statement was something like, we might have only 80 people show up voting on a very critical decision. I recommend we think about that advice. And it's at this point, I would want to maybe break off, because what I have next.
You got, you got time, you got another minute and 15 seconds and no hands up, so you can give her all.
Hand her up?
Nothing I can say.
I'll give a little bit more than that. Because now I wish to, I'm also experimenting between type of handwritten.
It's quite all right.
Yeah.
You have one minute, but we'll let you roll.
To run through the many topics that relate indirectly or directly to the McGovern project. There is some editorialization, I admit, and I could probably talk about each one of them for four minutes, but I'm not going to, unless, unless one of you requests it, a few of us come in and maybe do some presentation, in which case I will. So here are the elements. I'll go through them fast. Two articles that are either treated separately or together, depending on the topic of discussions, two memorandums of agreement or understanding that are in progress, that in some form relate to each other and relate to each article, a concept plan that's just now changing, and now we're showing half a building, and in-progress litigation, I have a case number, that could possibly annul and reverse a special permit denied from January 2020. It's related, and it's the one related to the Lunenburg Water Agreement and the car lot, et cetera. A much discussed, that's what I'm going to say, a much discussed land transfer agreement, a current Leinster water agreement that is raising still a few questions, and as-of-yet unexercised purchase option by 702 LLC for the land that would be the 40R location, past, present, and future MIPA submissions, three of them come into play, Targets in Westfield, Goodriches here, and 702 slash Capital Group submissions, past and future. A traffic study that has many major issues and now needs to change again because it is tied to the concept plan. A cost-benefit study that also has issues, for example, the absence of opportunity cost, potentially enormous legal costs, and the cost risks, and emerging stringency on environmental justice policy compliances that have a heavy relevance to both the McGovern and the Goodrich projects. The other economic, some of which George brought up, and housing and development projects that cannot receive as much attention because we're spending so much on the McGovern project.
Do you think you can, one more minute? We have five minutes left, and I don't want to.
Okay, I'll go real fast.
Real fast, one minute.
No, 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 no. I'll skip that. The uncertainty with respect to the, oh, the traffic renovation, I'm not going to do that. Let's skip that. A 40R preliminary determination eligibility approval that was predicted to take only a couple of weeks, maybe four at the most, which ended up taking several months. The lessons that I believe we have learned from both the late, from both the late 2019 and January 2020 special permit, the lessons I hope we learned from last year's town meeting, and in-progress 40B. Let's skip that. In fact, I'm going to skip all of them, but there are more.
I mean, that guy has no doubt.
And, but I wanted to end with, as I said, it was always a positive, you know, is that we do, we currently are in a position where I think we've got the best set of people, residents and government alike, pay, volunteer, to actually put something together for the voters, but I would highly encourage you, I think, the board to look for simplification.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I will say, we, you've got a lot of fans on text messaging, but just next time you speak, if you come closer to the microphone, so there's.
People are texting, they want to hear you.
We just gave texting, have you come closer?
Are you there, Allison?
Thank you, thank you both for your comments. Seeing no other hands up, we will move out of public comment period and into the town administrator report.
[inaudible].
No, that hand is the, that's the mouse, yeah, yeah, that's not her hand, yeah. So town administrators' report.
Okay.
Thank you both, bowing.
So in terms of just community notifications, I'm sure that most people are aware that the construction preparation has begun relative to the 70 and 1110 project. And Kevin Bartlett, who is the DPW Superintendent. And Kevin Bartlett, who is the DPW superintendent, is the point person for that, but wanted to remind the community that it is a mass DOT project and ultimately will be funneling issues and questions and things through them. That said, I had asked for essentially a press release and a schedule, tentative schedule subject to change of things that are happening, particularly over the next eight weeks or so. I heard from the project manager today and the engineer that they're gonna endeavor to have something to me by tomorrow afternoon. So as soon as we have that, we'll post it online. I was hoping to send it to the newspaper. Perhaps they do a story on it, maybe they don't. And certainly I will have a link on social media so that folks can update that. And as things go through, you know, I'll provide updates at the board meeting.
Just as you're having the conversation with them, our license and permit requests include the Bolton Fair that's coming up in the middle of August, so just making sure they have situational awareness to all of that. I'm sure DPW is working with them on that, but that's gonna, I know that's a big strain for the town in general. We love having it. We'd love it to be Lancaster Fair, but I'm not gonna beat that horse. But yeah, just make sure that they're cognizant of that strain on 117 at the time. So I'm sure they won't be doing work on Saturday and Sunday, but there might be equipment and things like that that would clog roadways and et ceteras. Sorry, keep going.
No, no.
My stream of consciousness, I apologize.
That's fine. So, the packet included finalized budget calendar, which depicts our targeted milestone date, so hopefully you had a chance to look at that. The capital budget and progress request sheets were also issued a little earlier this month to the department heads, and they're due back on August 1st. Your packet contains copies of the blank forms provided to the department heads, and while not all the forms will be utilized, I think it was important for the board to at least see the different forms that, you know, we would have, which include the land acquisition requests, equipment requests, the capital project inventory list, and this is the one, you know, Alex had mentioned earlier, that, you know, jokingly, we said, you know, start with tires, and anything more expensive than a tire should be provided on the list. So for, you know, departments like the chief or like DPW, that's, you know, an immense amount of work, and I think that, you know, the overall feeling from department heads was they were happy to provide it, but I just wanna make sure that it's clear that, you know, people are, the staff is hungry and looking forward to providing the information. So I think that's good. And then the last one is probably the one that's gonna be used the most, which is the capital projects request form. And so that form has a breakdown of each project by year, and then a funding source, and then it asks for revenue impacts and budget drivers. And so I think that that is gonna be helpful if I'm gonna take sort of, say, we wanted to build an entirely new community center. Wouldn't that be wonderful? To the tune of, say, $2.5 million. There clearly are budget drivers for that in, just like any expansion project, where you may have additional staff, you may have additional heating and cooling expenses, electric expenses. So those are the kind of things that, you know, we wanna make sure that we're articulating so it's not just that folks think that, you know, we spend this and we never have to think about it again, kind of thing. And the final spreadsheet was provided to simply depict how we may be able to showcase our capital needs. And I thought if it was, might be helpful to share the screen just so folks can see it, because I think ultimately this is what will end up being put forth, at least in the preliminary budget stuff. And so essentially, the first column of the sheet is the current year here, you know, and then the subsequent years would be thereafter. This reads FY '23, this is our current year, so obviously it needs to be updated, but this was just one that I took as a template. And essentially what will happen is that we'll fill in, you know, ADA compliance, for example, in facilities. Maybe we say that we wanna budget $1,500 for something like that every year, and so it budgeted every year, and then here it gives you the aggregate. There's a lot of different formulas down below in the sheet, and obviously, once the areas are populated with data, it'll be a little bit easier, but it'll essentially say, you know, what was requested versus what was funded, and then the over/under for those. And I think that that's just an important thing for folks to understand, that much like most communities, we have more to do than we have means to do it with. And some would be outlined as, you know, necessary or reoccurring, similar to the, you know, cruiser replacement and, you know, tires and maintenance on trucks and other facility things, and others would be, you know, gee, this would be really nice to have. So we have urgent, necessary, desirable, expanding service, enhancing surface or maintaining surface. So in the instance of the police cruiser, it would be to maintain service. And so usually, the urgent and maintain rise to the top, and so the way that that's written is there's some formulas behind that, essentially, that will basically pull those out and put them on a separate sheet so that when it's presented to both the finance committee and the select board, you can see all of the urgent needs that are needed to maintain, and then urgent needs that are needed to enhance, et cetera, et cetera. And so it has a way of kind of aggregating the data in a little bit easier way. And then anybody who wants to dig down into the dollars and cents is able to do that, you know, through a more comprehensive look at the spreadsheet. So, stop sharing there. The idea is, you know, with that also is that if someone wanted to project the maintenance to our fleet, for example, they could do, you know, Ctrl+F on a spreadsheet like that and put in vehicles, and it would only pull up all of the vehicles. And so if you wanted to see how much the town needs to spend to maintain every single truck, car, cruiser, fire, whatever, you'll be able to aggregate that data like that. So there's a couple of different pinch points there, and, you know, I know that we have a very learned community that'll be able to do that, but we'll certainly have some tutorials that we'll put on for that. And lastly, in your packet was the final version of the new budget instruction manual, which is, was issued to the department heads, and it explains how to complete both the capital request sheets that I just told you about, but also the general fund request sheets. And those general fund request sheets are something we can talk about later, but they're essentially, every department or cost center will have a workbook that's in Excel, and the workbook is comprised of anywhere between five to seven sheets. The front sheet of the workbook is the aggregate, so if all you wanna know is how much it costs to run the town administrator's office, that information will be on the front. But if you wanna break it down into how much do we spend on salaries versus office supplies versus membership dues, there's, there'll be a spreadsheet for that. So I think the idea is to give people the opportunity to have as much or as little information as they want, and then we kinda go from there. So that will ultimately feed into what is the aggregate budget, where I know that we have an omnibus budget here in Lancaster, but the idea behind that would be to have an actual budget book that's printed, that has all of the cost centers, not broken out into necessarily, you know, envelopes versus postage or anything like that, although that data will be available online if folks want it. But at least to have what it costs to run each department and the major cost centers behind those departments, which is personnel, and then supplies and staff, and then purchase services. So anything that we hire from the outside, any, you know, contracts that we have with other services, pest control, things like that. And so I'm meeting with the finance committee chair, Sue Smiley, tomorrow. We've agreed, and it's been working well, to meet pretty much every other Friday morning, and I'm happy to, you know, get a date for their next meeting and kinda give them a run-through of this, and we'll kinda go from there. Again, this process is new for everybody, and it may be well received, it may not be. I think it's consistent with the gentleman who made the dollar motion.
Yes.
Because it certainly is more, and I guess I'd be open as we move through it, is it too much, is it too little, is it too difficult to understand? But all of that will have to be something that we just continue to talk about. Do you want me to just, any questions on that?
So I would just say, thanks. Thank you for all of this effort that went into this. It's something that, that gentleman spoke to, for a lot of us at the town meeting, when he talked about the need for radical transparency when it comes to budgeting. This brings us that, and, you know, for me, the ability to be able to see more or less based on your tolerance for numbers and minutia, I think is really exciting, because we haven't had for a very long time. The first office I served in was finance committee years ago, before I was on the select board. I feel like people really need to understand how a budget's built, what our priorities are as a community. Budgets are value statements, and it's really, really important. And so I thank you and the department heads and everybody in town, the government or town service, who are going to help bring this thing to life, because it will help us exponentially in how we serve this town, and it'll help the townspeople have a real clear sense about what's going on. There's a lot of frustration out there about their tax bills, and we hear that, but people need to understand where the dollars are going, and how we're spending it, and what we're doing. We still need to work hard to come up with the diversification of our tax revenue, but that's a tale for another day. But I just wanna thank you for bringing, I think this is, I wasn't involved in the hiring for the town administrator, but I think this is, this type of expertise and experience that you bring from your past roles to town is what we really need and what I truly value. So I wanna give you a shout-out for, you've been here for just a short period of time and have really taken a lot of steps to help us get on a very strong path moving forward. It's not necessarily a path that leads to fields of gold, but it's a path that really clearly lays out the circumstance we're in, and I think that's the first step. Having that radical transparency with fellow department heads, too, who probably are gonna be thrilled to know sort of how the other dollars are spent, but almost more important than that, the taxpayers, for them to understand how this budget has developed is really, really important, and I'm so glad you're meeting with Sue to keep that conversation going. So my only comment and question on this was to say thank you, but I yield to my colleagues, I don't know if my remote colleague has any questions or comments. Two thumbs up again, nice. It's a two thumb night, we like that. Ms. Turner, do you have any comments, questions about?
Sure, I've been watching this, because this isn't the first time you've given us this, and it's, I was excited about the process now. I still am, always been a big pusher for transparency, and this will help. Question. The, going through my DOR seminars and talking to them and so on, I know that we have, not always, but as of late, used an omnibus budget, which is, my understanding is not ideal. It's not, it's, it's frowned upon. So however we build this, I know we can vote it and act it as an omnibus budget, but frankly, I don't see the merit of doing that, and so I won't put you on the spot now, but if we decide to do that, my question would be, why? You know, why an omnibus budget? Because we're putting such pain and effort and detail into building a, I think an omnibus budget erodes the people's faith, because it's just sort of an idea that can be moved around, and we need to know that we're committed to the budget. And I think that, I would personally don't wanna see an omnibus budget.
I don't, I don't, I mean, when I served on the finance committee and we served on the board, we didn't, I don't know when we shifted to an omnibus budget.
I've never worked in a community that has one.
Yeah, it's, it is, so, yes.
Not, not-
Can I tell you, and I will tell this to everybody who's watching if I stare into this owl, but Alex's point is exactly right, like, an omnibus budget is not, it may be easy to pass and all that, but it is far from transparent, and it's an easy thing to kick things down the road, you know, just paper over real decisions or priorities, but it can be toxic to a community and toxic to trust from the voters. I mean, I will, this is a fun fact, that my husband is probably glad he's not here to hear, because I say it all the time.
You can record it.
Can anyone tell me, I'm sure he watches this and that, can anyone tell me when the last time the federal government passed a budget through regular order? Anybody? I'll just pick the people in the room. Anybody? 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 What's up? 1997 is the last time the federal budget has been passed through regular order, which means 13 appropriations bills, 13 authorization bills, and a budget that lays out exactly how you're gonna-
That's why I think such skepticism-
I swear to God. And I've been singing this song, I have a, I just, it drives me insane, because it is a dereliction of duty for every member of Congress who doesn't push for a budget through regular order, and it would be, I think it's a dismission, a dismiss of our responsibilities and obligations of the town, both us and the finance committee, not to work together to give people a budget that they can understand and that they can see and they can pass at town meeting without just being one number. It's like the most bananas idea I've ever heard of, and I will do everything I can to try to work with you and you and Jason to create this.
So it sounds like you're gonna support me when I say no, no, no.
No, I am. We're gonna fight to see who says it quicker and louder, but yes, I am, yes. So, anything else on that?
Well, so loud and clear, we have the no omnibus.
Yes.
And the second thing is that we, I know we have the DOR coming to us in the fall, which is not going to specifically look at this, but obviously they're gonna be interested in the process and shed their light. And I'm looking forward to that as well. And is there anything, despite the fact that we just passed an omnibus budget, is there any effort or anything we can do for the current fiscal year to try to incorporate some of the mechanisms, the reporting, that you're seeking in the future budget?
So, the way that this budget is built, it's gonna be based on GMOA, which is the, you know, the general accounting principles for public finance. And so you could have it as, I would not suggest doing a line item budget. I think a line item budget is difficult, but I think that it would be very helpful to have two budgets, two budget appropriations, one for operating-
One for capital.
And one for capital, and have the enterprises separate. I think that it makes it separate and distinct, cost centers. I think that it's good to put those things in different buckets, and I think that even though the number for the town budget would be X amount of dollars, that there'll be substantive behind that, and the budget book that I'm looking to build that was behind that will meet all the requirements for the Government Financial Auditors Association. And so you could adopt it any way you want, because the budget book that's there will have all of the data and the requirements to do anything from line item to omnibus and anything in between.
So not for, we're not gonna solve the problem today, and I'd like to have the discussion with you, you could do it either here or another meeting or offline, but I think line item budgets are ideal for, if we are going to be going into the financial-
Oh dear, we're gonna have like eight nights of-
I understand, and we used to, we used to. It was laborious, but-
Super not supportive of line item budgets.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't do full line.
That's a tough one.
Well, no, 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 I'm just, so my understanding is that we're heading into dire fiscal times, and I think the more detail we can get, the better that people's faith and comprehension will be.
The goal of having any type of budget process is to go through as if it were a line item budget-
Yes.
-in all of the opportunities prior to town meeting floor.
Yep.
The problem with a line item budget, over and above the fact that it's extremely laborious, is that folks who perhaps have not been watching or haven't looked at it might want to detract from a certain line item without having a corresponding other line item. And so if we don't have the ability to pass a balanced budget, then that negates the point of town meeting, and we have to do it all over again, and it gets very expensive. And when I was in Connecticut, they did line item budgeting, and we ended up having to have three separate town meetings and a referendum vote, because people would detract from a line item but not have a corresponding way to basically fill the hole. And it's a, it's a problem if you have folks doing that, because I think that there's a lot of, there's a lot of accounting that goes into it, of course, and that doesn't mean to be flip, it just, it's the nature of the beast. And so if someone says, "I don't wanna spend $300 on envelopes, I wanna zero that line item out," we then automatically do not have a balanced budget. And so there's, there's a checks and balances here, so the idea would be to give people enough that they feel comfortable that the total amount that they're voting upon for operations is X, and they know where it's going. The total amount that they're voting upon for capital is Y, and they're comfortable with that, you know, Z for enterprise, and you go from there. So I think if, I think that would be a very good step forward, instead of just going from one extreme, which is the omnibus, to a line item budget. Those are so two-
They are too polar.
They are too polar opposites, yes. And I don't necessarily think that a line item, but most communities are getting away from line item budgets because of the complexity of what happens on town meeting floor.
And the unintended consequences of those actions.
Well, it's expensive because you have to keep continuing town meeting and there's an expense to that.
Having passed the, worked diligently and I can't think of how many all-nighters you could talk to some fellow selectmen about the last override that we had, which was so large. We got down to, you know, just, people did question everything. One of the things that helped that I assume we're probably going to do is some budget forums prior to town meeting. So we, and, you know, all weekend, week and day meetings with department heads. So people get to see what the department heads were talking about and requesting and so on. So a lot of, a lot of education in public forums are going to help. And we'll see, we can see how it shakes out, but.
So just so you know though, the last operational override was 24 years ago, which is nearly unheard of in, no, and that isn't, but it's nearly unheard of with the rate of inflation that we have been experiencing, particularly over the last 10 years, that it would be more than two decades since the last override. And I think people hear that and they immediately, you know, the sky is falling. And a lot of times, it's just the ability for a community to catch up with the rate of inflation and even things out. So I would be remiss if I told you that I didn't think that that was a very unique and distinct possibility that we're going to have this year. But the idea would be that I'm front loading all of the information and the other department heads are coming in and providing all of the reasons why, and that it's not seen necessarily as a disaster, but to even the playing field. Is everyone going to feel their way? No. If people want to get down to, you know, the dollars and cents, that's absolutely their right. But the idea of trying to do that prior to being on town meeting floor is, would be the goal, at least for me as the administrator.
And for all of us. And for us, yeah. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much. I don't recognize all of the names on the screen. So before we move on to the next items, are there any here to speak on the licenses and permits? If you are, please raise your hand. If not, we'll continue. Okay, the floor remains yours.
So the next item in your packet is an outline regarding a new Department of Health and Human Services. So at the request of the Chair, I studied the current operations and managements for Health and Human Services or Social Services currently existing in Lancaster. So on page one, you can, and should, would it be helpful to share my?
Page one of the memo?
I don't know.
Page one of the memo or page one of the document?
Page one of the memo, I apologize, yeah.
I mean, sure, yeah.
I say that, but I'm not.
You're very good at sharing screens.
There it is, okay. So I just think this is sort of an important. So the social services type operations, which do not in this case include the library, not because they're not considered social services, but because it's a separately elected board, equate to approximately $247,000 in salaries. Lancaster's 2021 census had a total population for us for about 8450, 8,450, which is up 5% since 2010. So that amount equates to residents age 65 and over are nearly 19% of our population. 7% are veterans. 9.5% of the Lancaster residents live with some kind of disability or living with some kind of, have a person living with them with some kind of disability. And of that 9.5%, 5% of those folks are either underinsured or completely uninsured. 4% of Lancaster's population are children under five and more than 16.5% are children that are under the age of 18, still living at home. So I suppose the point of all of that data and the other information that's in the beginning part of this submission is that we have a lot of folks living in Lancaster who would benefit either directly or indirectly from a more robust and comprehensive social services, which I've outlined in the memo. So the next several pages of the document go through the reorganization factors and goals. And the last portion deals with a recommended organizational plan. So the reorganization factors are basically written out here, the benefits of recreation. We talk about the field of, or I talk about the field of social work. And then considering the revisions to the job description and the jobs with social service, particularly in the post pandemic era, but also with the rise of mental health crises. I think that it's important to go through that. This is included in the packet, it's also online if folks want to read it. But essentially, the reorganized personnel would exist of, a Director of Health and Human Services would be, which would be a full-time exempt status. Exempt status means that they are salaried instead of hourly. The person, the minimum qualifications that we have are education and training equivalent to a master's degree in either human services or some related field and licensed as a social worker or some equivalent with at least five years of experience in social services and at least two of those years dealing with populations over the age of 65. The second thought would be to have a full-time exempt status outreach and activities coordinator with the education level equivalent to a bachelor's and also licensed social worker or a provisional licensed social worker in the state of Massachusetts. The difference between the two is one has completed the hours working underneath a licensed clinical social worker where the other has not. But the educational component and the training and the hours are the same. They just don't have the work that was necessarily under. The idea of having a provisional license for someone is that they could technically get their hours of service underneath their director here. And so the benefit of that is to attract people who, you know, want to be able to do that because it's an on-the-job benefit versus having to do that in their own time and their personal time or having to go and pay for clinical hours. And lastly, a full-time recreation supervisor, again, bachelor's level education, experienced both with public bathing beaches and childcare management practices, which are dictated by the EEC, which is the Early Education and Childcare Division for the state. The administrative assistant and meals coordinator position would remain as it has, as would the drivers and other per diem staff. The health agent, which is noticed here, would remain, but it still remains unfilled as it's been for more than 10 years. The town code actually calls this position out by title, which is rare because there aren't many positions that the code does call out, but it does call out this one. So it seemed like in just trying to get a comprehensive look, that it was important to include that position here and just say that it, right now, has not been filled. I frankly am not sure if it needs to be filled. It seems like the Board of Health is doing, you know, that work and they're doing a great job. But admittedly, I haven't been here long enough to be able to see what the holes are. So I would take my direction from that, from the Board of Health. So the reorganized personnel total equates to a salary of approximately $243.
$243,000.
$243,000, excuse me. And that would be if we brought everybody in at the midpoint of the grades that they were in. So of course, if we don't hire people right at the midpoint, which is historically the way that we've done things, the savings would be more. This isn't a great deal, this isn't a windfall or cash flow. It basically, I'm counting this as sort of budget neutral. There's about $4,000 to play with on that. And so again, worst case scenario is that the structure is, you know, budget neutral. Best case, there's an extra $4,000. And then in the final paragraphs of my memo, I outlined what's been done to date, including advertising the director's position with a priority review deadline of Friday, the 15th. Chairman Carrigan and certain members of the COA Board and the Friends have met a couple of times, including Zoom meeting that we had last night. I've asked that at the next COA Board meeting, that they discuss the ability to participate in the interviews, both in second and, I'm sorry, both in first and in second and some review.
First and second rounds.
First and second rounds. I've shared this memo and the draft recreation director, or recreation coordinator, rather, job description with the Chair, it was met favorably. I am talking with the Board of Health chairperson tomorrow. I've already talked to him about it once before, but I'll be, you know, going to their next meetings just to get some feedback from that.
And Recreation.
I already sent it to him, yep, I said that, yep.
Fantastic. And next steps are the interview process that we're going to establish for the director position and then the draft job descriptions for Recreation Coordinator and the title I'm totally going to remember, Recreation Activities Coordinator. I knew that. Fantastic, okay. Well, thank you. And as you said at the beginning, at the outset, I asked that you do this deep dive and look at opportunities to do things differently and to set up a Health and Human Services Department, as it were, and I appreciate the work you did. It's obviously very well thought out and well planned. I'm thrilled with the responses received so far with folks that we've talked to. I mean, a very good conversation with, as Kate mentioned, some COA Board members and Friends Board members, and Kate mentioned the conversations with others. And, you know, I'm excited to see what this opportunity brings for us. And I think it's going to be, it's going to be really good for the town.
It's probably worth noting too, that we advertised the position, I believe, about a week and a half ago or so. And we've received about 32 applications and more than half of those exceed the minimum, meaning that they have a master's, they are licensed social workers and they have more than three to five years' experience. Many are actually from the municipal sector, which I think is helpful, and others are predominantly in the healthcare sector. So, you know, certainly it's, I think it's a field that people get a lot of, you know, pleasure from. I think that they like doing it. Clearly I'm biased speaking as a social worker. I was a social worker, I still maintain my license. So I think, you know, it's important work and I was happy to be able to at least have something that was out there that people were interested in exploring.
So I'll go with our remote member. If you have any questions, comments, concerns, two thumbs, whatever you got. Two thumbs, awesome. Thank you, thanks sir. I don't have any, I mean, I've been a part of the development of all this, so I don't have any questions for you. So Alex, do you have any questions, comments?
Of course. So first, thank you for the thorough memo. As I mentioned earlier, that I felt a little behind the, behind things. We did get this memo earlier, the rest of the packet I didn't. But in the development of this, my concerns are numerous. First, you're preaching to the choir because I have long advocated for better support for, in my previous job, better support for human services. So that's, I get, take Steel Jason's two thumbs up. But heading, and this isn't just this position, this is in past years. We have, we have sent a budget to people in 2022, 2021. I watched where we sent a budget and then drastically changed the budget with addition, different staff or different payrolls and so on. And I don't think that that's.
Sent a budget to who, I'm sorry?
The people, town meeting.
Oh, okay.
Proved a budget at town meeting and then changed things. And sometimes there's something that's extraordinary that you have to do that, but it is less than ideal. And I understand.
This doesn't have a budgetary impact.
Right, it's not budgetary.
It does, I think it does. So that's why I was, well, so allow me to just tell you why I think it does. And the other thing is that we have a panel, which I was going to ask you about and I will before we leave, the Government Study Committee, because I think that this is something that the Government Study Committee should be looking at and rather than just moving forward with everything without them. I know we had a lot of interest in people that I think they deserve and need to look at this. And the other thing that disappointed me is that it wasn't advertised locally. And maybe that's, you know, you have to, you have to cast a broad net, but it's not on our website. In fact, somebody sent it to me, that was the first I saw it. So I was, I was a little bit surprised and shocked. But some of the things, when we talk about the budget analysis that was done, having worn this hat as a day job or been involved in this, there's certain things like the meals coordinator and the reduction of hours, albeit small, I just don't think can, I think, I don't think that the numbers, and I'm intimately involved with these, you know, knew these numbers extremely well. I don't think these numbers work the way we hope they would. Not to say that I would love to, wouldn't love to see something like this happen and be budget neutral, but I think it's going to be, I think we need to prepare ourselves that this number is actually going to be much higher. Adding, we're actually adding a whole new department. And this is again, why I think the Government Study should be there. And I don't think there's a real understanding of, also, you have to, I know, Steve, you're big on moving on, moving on, but you have to understand the history, where we've come from. For example, some of the, of the revenue enhancement portion that was discussed is great and should be done. We had camp, for example, we ran a camp for years. And we had put out an RFP and had a camp provider who ended up, it was an open book because he ended up having to give us a stipend regardless of what he made. It was supposed to be a percentage of his profits. They, and it was run, we did it, we ran it, but we shared the proceeds with Recreation. He lost money. And a lot of camps do, more and more towns are, because of the liability, I'm not going to think, are dropping camps, there's a need for them. But we can talk about that. And the things that are most important for those that are in need, such as, you know, the meals, the dispatch, are those that are most vulnerable, are being cut. And I would argue that they're not, even at the current rate, they're not getting services that are deserved. So for example, cutting the meals coordinator, cutting the.
I'm sorry, there's no cuts. There's no cuts. Well, that's exactly the budgeted number and exactly the number of hours.
Okay, so the administrative meals coordinator is 15 hours a week. Right, and then the, and right now, the administrator is 19 hours a week and the meals coordinator is 12 hours a week, so that's 27.
Nine hours here.
The fact that that person is working that, that is not a budgeted number.
It's not what's budgeted, right.
It's not what's budgeted, it would have gone over budget.
We have to base it on the budgeted personnel from FY23.
At the end of the year, we had to transfer money. That person was over budgeted. I'm working with the budgeted numbers.
So, yes, so because he was, if you were talking about this year, we had somebody who was out, so they were covering. But in general, would you agree that the administrative person worked 19 hours?
No.
The admin person?
There is not going to be an admin person just for admin, no.
Okay. But I'm saying, so that was a service that was, so dispatch was, admin was nine hours, dispatch was 10 hours. And the meals person was, I think 12 hours or nine hours.
I'm taking dispatch out of it because that's a service that's reimbursed by MART, so that isn't our service.
Correct.
So that's not, that's not accounted for here because it's not, it's not our staff person.
So.
Which is why it's listed, is that why it's listed as dispatch, oh, sorry, admin meals coordinator?
Correct.
And then finally, while I think that this is a great goal, as is having a full-time facilities and all the other things that we do that are over and above, this is not comparable, I mean, we need, we need it to improve. It's just that drastic step. And I, given the fact that we just voted a budget, I'm not sure it is the best way to provide services because I do see some, because I'm so familiar with it and know, I know the potential pitfalls. And I also don't want to undermine, which I think it is, the Government Study Committee.
Can I speak to the Government Study Committee?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So a couple of quick things. First, we are at a pivot point because there's a vacancy. Just putting someone into that job as it was constituted now, because we already passed a budget, seemed to be a dereliction of duty when we had an opportunity to look at the whole approach holistically, which is what I think this does. Yes, it's not ideal because it's after a budget's been passed, but it for the. Yes, it's not ideal because it's after a budget's been passed, but it, for the most part, part around the margins, is budget neutral. And I'm sure we'll discover things operationally that are not in the salary lines that may be different than what we envisioned, but it's, to me, more important that we set a goal and we develop a department and really move in that direction, rather than just filling a slot because that's the slot that was in the budget. As long as the dollars are there and the resources are there, which I believe they are, then I think this is, I mean, obviously, I think, because I asked her to develop it, but I think this is a really strong step forward. I will say relative to the Government Study Committee, the Government Study Committee is not here to, at least, not to break bad news to them, but it is to talk about our charter and our form of government and how we operate, not how we develop each individual job responsibilities for each director of each department. It's really the who we are as a town structure and government structure. We don't have a charter. We need a charter. That's one of the most important things we need, master plan, charter, things like that. That's their task, is to help us figure out who we are from a government perspective, not the nitty-gritty of how each department's going to run and who's going to oversee the recreation department and things like that.
It wasn't, yeah.
So I would just say the Government Study Committee is sort of about 20,000 feet in the sky above establishment.
They're not going to get into operations.
They're not getting into this.
I don't want them to get into operations. I'm just saying, even in private industry, if you have a restructuring, it's very typical to do things like benchmarking and have a much more inclusive process.
But that's off of the Government Study Committee.
No, 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 I'm saying, even if we propose this, and I do think that the benchmarking or the big, my understanding is looking at best practices of other towns and other departments. We've asked for that before, at least that's my understanding of the Government Study Committee. It's not just, do you have a charter or not? It's-
It's about the government piece.
It's about the government piece. It's not operation.
Not the municipal operation. They're too separate and very distinct.
Okay. So what, so even if, even if we didn't have the Government Study who are talking about this, when you create a new department, when we restructure, typically there is, you know, again, this would be, this is the first time I saw it a couple of days ago, is to look at the-
Well, I mean, the job description, in fairness, that you've said that a couple of times, the job description was sent out to the board as it went out.
No, it wasn't.
Yes, it was.
Oh, okay. I didn't see it.
So I just wanted to clarify, this is not the first time you saw it.
I must have missed it.
Yeah, that's okay.
I didn't see that, but, so as I said, somebody had sent it to me.
Okay, I'll get to you in just a second, Jason. Thank you.
So it is not uncommon in private practice to have that comprehensive look, the inclusivity, the needs assessment and so on. And coming as somebody, that's why I can speak so strongly and so passionately to this, I know that there are services that are needed that I don't think can be provided this way. And while I appreciate the idea and I agree with the idea 100%, I'm fiscally very conservative, though we need revenue enhancement, some of the hopes, I think, are going to be, based on experience, difficult to attain. So I don't want to blue-sky people.
Yeah. Jason?
Yeah, my question was hopefully not to debate the Study Committee and to ask if there was a motion in front of the board or if this is even something that we're deliberating on, and if not, I mean, I think each select board member is welcome to reach out to the town administrator outside the meeting, not to squash down any positive conversation.
No, I appreciate it. You keep us on track. I appreciate that. Thank you. And I don't, I don't believe there's any action. Thank you. I don't want to cut you off. Are you all set, Jason? Good, all right. I don't believe there's any action we need to take tonight. We've, this, the-
Well, I mean, so for me, I never want to propose something that is going to be, you know, a bad idea, and that's, the idea is to have discourse. It, to me, is, it's disheartening, frankly, that, you know, you haven't really said anything positive about it, and that's okay, that's your right, but having, you know, fulfilled three of the jobs that are listed here, particularly being responsible for 97% of a rec department, your statement that camp is not necessary or that it wouldn't be fruitful, no, no, may I finish? That it wouldn't be fruitful, that the camp lost money. I was able to sustain three staff members in a community that is but seven miles from here on that. And when I am talking with parent groups, because I have school-aged children, the idea that they have to go outside of town is really a loss for them, and a lot of people have to work, which is why the beginning of the proposal said, you know, we have almost 20% of the population has children that are living at home. And those children either are of working age but don't have a lot of opportunities to work in their community, in their home community, or they have parents that both work outside of the house or work inside of the house and can't get work done with them being there and having a safe place for them to go. Bolton has a recreation department, camps, Harvard does.
Land Truist, Bolton, Denny, Denny Camp.
Okay. The town of Stowe does, and so I just think that I haven't, I haven't heard anybody else be so negative about this, all of the other boards and committees that I've talked to. And, and so, you know, that's fine, and it's understood, but, but I combed through the budget, and I just, I want to make it clear that the assertion that somehow this is going to cost more money is, in my opinion, 100% correct. I went through the numbers many-
Incorrect.
Incorrect. A hun, I went through the numbers many, many times, and no one's hours that are currently there are being cut. The benefits remain the same as what was budgeted. The services remain the same and are in fact expanded upon, and I just think that that's an important piece to it.
So is this something that you would, it would comfort you to have a vote from the board?
It would comfort me, yeah, to know that, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to ever be moving forward with something that the people who supervise me unilaterally think is a bad idea. So it would just, it would be helpful to know if we're barking up a root tree.
I appreciate that.
And will be a selling point or not when we go to speak to the candidates, because the idea is that they have the ability to sort of formulate, you know, their team and sort of fulfill the missions and goals as outlined in this proposal. And if that isn't the right thing, we should be very clear about that before we interview people.
So, so let me just clarify a couple of things. First, I did, I loved camp. It was the, I won't say that it was, I never said that camp wasn't a good idea. I'd said it's not going to be, I think, the golden egg that we hoped for. We had, it was, I would say the three years with camp was probably the highlight, and it fell, a lot of the work fell on me, but it was, it was beneficial to the families that we talked about, although a lot of people came from other towns and so on, too, but that's fine. That can do it. The second thing is when we, according to our policies and procedures, when we put something out and we do this, we discuss it and, you know, take it.
I will say, everyone received a copy of the job description in advance and had an opportunity to weigh in.
I didn't have an opportunity to weigh in, but that's fine. We have public meetings for a reason.
I understand that, but everyone received a copy of the job description and had a chance to weigh in. And it's, the process has been followed the way it needed to be. This, I believe, and I'm going to recognize Jason in a second, I believe this is, I mean, I recognize you all the time, but I'm going to recognize you in just a second. I believe this, I firmly that this is in the town's best interest, otherwise I wouldn't have sponsored it through the work that Kate's been doing, and I'm grateful for it. So I yield to the gentleman from Brockman Road.
I'd like to make a motion to give Town Administrator Hodges a vote of confidence for the proposal for the new Department of Health and Human Services.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I'm all, so I'll just add what I really took away from it. Now that we have something to deliberate, I really valued the totality of thought that went into it. It wasn't single-threaded. It was very encompassing. I think that the words that I agreed with that Kate had said is, you know, it was an opportunity to really rethink it. As someone who likes me personally, as I personally like to iterate on things and rethink things, when you have an opportunity, it was really nice, and I got it. I think that the other aspect for me was the social work. I think, you know, that's going to be invaluable in Lancaster, so I'm all for it. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Before we leave this, Kate had, Kate and I had discussed this more than a month ago, back when I was there, and I like the idea of a human resources and human services department. I have no problem with that. Talked at great length with Chief Moody about a shared social worker. So I recognize and understand that, and actually have done a lot of the work. So I understand and appreciate the value of it. For me, this is about process, and I have, contrary to what you have heard, have heard concerns. I guess you haven't heard them. But that's that, and I-
All right. All those in favor? Mr. Allison? Ms. Turner?
Nay.
Mr. Carrigan? Aye. Two ayes, one nay, no abstentions. Thank you all. Next item up for bid is town clerk recruitment update, and then we have some licenses to approve and permits to approve, which will be very exciting. I'm sorry, Chief, are you here for the permits or are you just enjoying the fun? Okay, great. I'm trying a new thing of acknowledging people in the room or on Zoom who've got something that's on the agenda, so.
The update is very brief. The position closed on 6:30. We received 10 applications. One of those individuals withdrew, and the subject of our executive session, once business is concluded here, will-
We'll address it further.
-politely address the remainder.
Thank you. Now, we are on to licenses and permits. Do I make, do I read them out and someone makes a motion? Is that how we're going to do this? That's what the chief says, so that's what we're going to do. All right. Try to do this as quick as humanly possible. We have three where if, if it is the, without objection from my colleagues, I would read through all three and, well, I'd read through at least the two pertaining to one event and then another one, and vote those two together if possible. Unless there's an objection.
Why don't you just do my, yeah, by the fair and then the-
Yes, again, the other one, yep. Okay, so, number one is a special one-day beer and wine license. Bolton Fairgrounds Incorporated, application for special one-day liquor license to serve all alcohol at the Bolton Fair, August 12 to 14, 2022. Storage day of August 11, 2022. The second one related to Bolton Fair is application for public entertainment, weekdays and Sundays. Annual Bolton Fair, August 12 to 14, 2022. Thursday, 5 to 10 p.m., Friday, noon to 10 p.m., Saturday, 9 a.m. to 10 p.m., and Sunday, 9 a.m. to 9 p.m. at the Lancaster Fairgrounds at 318 7 Bridge Road. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Did we get, I see some insurance for the antique truck show, but I don't see that for the fair. Do we, do we get insurance for the fair?
You mean their insurance, their-
Yeah, we have to, we have to have it for the alcohol and that kind of thing.
Well, it doesn't have to come in until-
Until just before.
I know, usually we just, usually attached, because like the other one.
Yeah, the permit's pending.
It says it right on when you do that, then. It can be revoked with, if they don't reply.
Okey-dokey.
All righty.
So it's moved and seconded, right?
Any further debate or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Mr. Allison? Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Carrigan? Aye. 300. Next item, application for public entertainment, weekdays and Sundays. Bay State Antique Truck Show, also known as ATCA, to hold on August 27th and August 28th, 2022, from 8 a.m. to 8 p.m. at the Lancaster Fairgrounds located at 318 7 Bridge Road.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, it looks like this must be because Rose is signing for Bob and they're a, it looks like, because we have an insurance on this one, so it looks like the Bolton Fair is insuring them. It's a nonprofit. That's great.
Hearing of further debate? All those in favor? Mr. Allison? Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Carrigan? Aye. 300. Thank you for that. Now, oops, hold on, keep flipping. Communications, letter from Mr. Maxon Frelick of Parker Road regarding sidewalks. I did not find that in my pack.
Okay.
I searched feverishly for it because I wanted to hear what Mr. Frelick had to say about sidewalks.
I would request that you table that, so I can make sure that I get that back.
Is there a motion to table that?
But I will just tell you that he's nine.
Oh, that's, no, well, then we definitely need, we should have him come in and meet with us.
It was the most wonderful letter.
That's fantastic. All right, so is there a motion to table until we can get Mr. Frelick in here and have a conversation with him?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
We might have to take him early.
You can just hold up a two finger if you want. All right, any further debate on tabling? None. All those in favor? Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Carrigan? Aye. 300. We look forward to seeing Mr. Maxon Frelick.
I will reach out and invite him.
I think we should have him come in here and-
Let's put him up early so he can get home.
Yeah, well, that's my new policy, remember, anyone who's in the room, but we should, yeah, definitely get him here early. So that is fantastic. That concludes the business of the meeting that is not going to be in executive session. So the board will enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, town clerk applicant, and not to reconvene in open session thereafter.
That's a motion. That's a wrong call.
That's a motion, yeah, I know.
Second.
All those in favor? Mr. Allison? Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Carrigan? Aye.